These wild cats like. It's like, well, there's something like, will the everybody in?
Recording in progress.
Everyone's in.
Okay, um, it is not quite ten thirty. A few more seconds, so we'll just hang on till the clock says ten thirty and then we'll get started.
There is it okay if I call Director Elliott? See if she's running late.
Okay, if you want to maybe do that.
Very quick.
Okay, it's ten thirty. Good morning. We will call this committee of the whole meeting to order for May twenty second, twenty twenty four. And acknowledge the meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of delamination. Directors, you have the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone is aware of? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda, please. Director Brander, Director Dowd, any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor, any opposed, carry. Adoption of the minutes of April the twenty fourth, are there any errors or missions? Seeing no hands, a motion to adopt minutes, please. Director Brander and Director Dowd, any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor, any opposed, carry. We have one registered delegation and I would like to welcome Sergeant Graham Kerr from the Powell River, um, RCMP. And you are going to uh have a presentation regarding the quarterly policing report, so please come up to the table Sergeant. And um we look forward to your presentation. You have ten minutes.
Yeah, vehicle, but isn't check make sure it's not like? That way, do I share this or? It's a new vehicle. I don't know what the alarm sounds like. Very much.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. So yeah, my name is Sergeant Graham Kerr. I'm currently acting as a commander as Staff Sergeant Weave is away. So he's asked me to present the uh report to you folks. Um, this goes from January to March, of course, of this year, uh incomparable to the same period of last year, twenty twenty three. So overall, our calls per service are relatively close to what they were last year. We're looking at fifteen hundred and one calls during the first quarter. Previous year was fourteen fifty five. That's approximately two days more call worth of uh calls that we have this year, so it's really unremarkable. Our non criminal calls per service. Check well being, uh calls uh have gone up uh. Quite a bit, and this is covering the the power of areas. So we're one hundred forty six uh this quarter. Uh compared to hundred and six the previous quarters, we're about thirty eight percent. Our mental health act uh pretty much on par, uh sixty two this quarter, sixty four last quarter. The unspecified assistance, which is kind of a catchall for uh calls for us, uh really. Unremarkable calls. Uh they're down approximately twenty five percent, eighty five. Uh first quarter this year compared to the first quarter of last year. Missing persons complaints, they're down about a quarter. Uh we had twelve during our first quarter this year and then comparatively sixteen last year. In regards to persons uh offenses, persons crimes, uh we're pretty much uh at the same mark as uh from last year. Uh we saw ninety in total calls during the first quarter. Um comparable to ninety one of twenty twenty three, the first quarter. Uh we look at assaults, they're up slightly at forty one. Compared to thirty nine from last year. Extortion calls are uh, there's no change, or sexual offenses, we're down uh. Approximately fifty percent. Five for this year, uh comparable to ten from the previous year. Harassment, uh. We have ten uh reported this year compared to fifteen, so not too too far off. Uttering threats is pretty close as well at twenty six. Uh compared to twenty four, so it's really statistically unremarkable. So we look at our property crime offenses. Two hundred thirty nine uh during the first quarter this year, comparable to two hundred forty three of the last year, so we're about on same same pace. Our bike thefts are up a little bit, six this year compared to two of last year. Residential break in enters, they're up uh slightly comparable to last year, seventeen reported in the first quarter. Compared to eleven. Our breaking enters to businesses, they've dropped uh quite substantially. Which is a good thing, we nine this quarter comparable to nineteen. We can attribute that to some of our uh more prolific B and E folk uh. Being uh. In custody. And then our other break in enters are uh two reported, so other uh. Facilities, things like that, uh comparable to six. Theft under uh thirty five comparable to forty two last year. Uh so we're down on theft under, our shoplifting is down. Fifteen to uh comparable to twenty eight, our theft from vehicles uh down. Fifteen comparable to twenty one of last year. Theft from vehicle, sorry, theft on vehicles were down slightly. Three when compared to four. Last year. Frauds, we're at uh forty two uh reports for the first quarter. Last year at thirty six. And our mischiefs, uh they're up uh quite a bit. Uh we have eighty seven reported in the first uh. First uh quarter comparable to fifty eight. So a lot of, in in regards to the thefts, uh we are seeing a decrease overall generally, uh. All of our prolific thieves have either moved on. And or been incarcerated during that first quarter. Starting to see some of them return back into the community, so we expect those numbers to increase. Drug offenses. And our weapon offenses. So unfortunately, we still do not have a general investigation section here in Powell River, so that's our blanked out unit, so. They're the unit that would typically proactively uh work on drug offenses, drug trafficking charges, things of that sort. Um so drug offenses, we had one reported. Uh in twenty twenty four, quarter one, comparable to two of twenty twenty three. Again, uh last year, we didn't have a GIS unit as well, so. And then as well as the the current political stance on drugs, uh. Prioritized in our in our. World at this particular form. Uh weapons offenses, uh no change, with six reported the first quarter. This year and six last year. So calls per area, so. In regards to the provincial areas here. We had two hundred fifty six calls uh total for uh. Twenty twenty four in the first quarter, comparable to two hundred and forty, so. Not really too much of a change comparable to last year. Looking at the north. Regional district, uh we're right on par, there's no change, thirty one calls last year and thirty one calls this year for the first quarter. Uh the south saw a. An increase, approximately twenty one percent. Hundred and forty three calls during the the first quarter comparable to one hundred and eighteen calls. Uh of last year. Uh Savior Island, uh again, we only had two versus uh three of last year, it's uh. We don't really see calls pick up on the island until. It's on us here. And then Texada Island is slightly down on calls. Uh eighty received for first quarter twenty twenty four. Comparable to eighty five last year. We've had a a few programs going on throughout the uh. It's uh the first quarter here, our community was uh. Community policing officer, Constable Paula Perry, she attended uh pretty much all of the uh. Schools minus Brooks and minus the Texada School, uh. She presented on a program called Don't Hug Doug, the program uh regarding uh body autonomy and consent. Uh it just uh it speaks to uh uh youth and their uh. Consent to allowing people to touch and hug and things of that sort. Um so that program went fairly well. Speaking with Constable Perry, I know that she does have further plans to attend Texada Island. To present on the island over there. We've also done a fraud awareness series, a series of uh there were eight presentations done throughout uh Powell River in regards to online. Uh frauds, frauds uh. Own call or. Own frauds, things of that sort, mainly presented to the seniors in the community as they are typically. The uh victims of these types of offenses. We've seen a large uptick in uh frauds and and people being defrauded. Uh I'm sure we see it on the news, et cetera. Uh there's no difference in Powell River than it is everywhere else. Uh as well as uh uh we've been doing some home and personal safety talks uh to inclusion clients, this is uh. It's for uh staff and clientele. At inclusion uh regarding folks' uh safety on the streets, uh safety in the community, uh just some very general but good programming. By uh Constable Perry. Uh there is a new program, the Situation Table, that is going to be in the process of being developed for Powell River. It's something I've seen in other communities uh throughout the province, it's uh provincially uh. A monitored program comes with its own budget, things of that sort. Uh it helps uh frontline workers, we gather as a group, uh we identify. Uh vulnerable folks, vulnerable people in the community, and try and connect them with services uh before they experience uh. A negative uh situation or traumatic event. These are for the more higher risk uh individuals that have yet. To fall uh into a uh a negative situation that we feel that. Would benefit from uh some intervention. Again, we're still in the planning process, this is something that the city of Powell River is. Involved in. Rod, Staff Sergeant Weave uh. Into the community, so we're still working on trying to find a chair for that. And uh. Work with uh getting that into town. Benefits of the program, reduce long term demand on emergency services, increase vulnerable per people's use of services. And proactively connect people to services. General updates for our organization, uh body worn cameras, uh Axon has been identified as the successful vendor. There is uh some. Say. Testing going on right now, everything seems to have passed, uh the test was flying colors into different uh pilot uh detachments. It's a pity rollout will be this fall, uh and then going into next year. It's gonna be a massive undertaking, of course, so. Uh don't anticipate it, us all in town being outfitted until probably late next year, I guess. The Taser seven rollout, that's a uh a new uh. Laser platform, uh we have. The new models at the detachment, uh we have one or two persons that are trained to use it and they're trainers themselves. Uh we're just waiting for more training. Equipment so we can outfit the rest of the detachment, they're uh excellent uh. Tools for us, uh they're state of the art, so. See when that comes out. Uh National Police Federation, that's our union, collective agreement, uh it went to binding arbitra- arbitration, that's all completed. Uh. Uh the arbitrators come up with a decision, so we do have a new contract. And that will uh go until, I believe, the end of. Twenty twenty four? This year, and then we start again. And then, of course, there's our priorities uh regarding our annual performance plan, uh our river will be. Advertising road safety. Always a popular one that uh the highest concerns within the community. Crime reduction, uh reconciliation, as well as uh employee wellness. Thank. That's everything for my presentation.
Thank you, Sergeant Kerr. Um we'll now open it up to directors to ask questions of you based on your presentation, so. Um who would like to ask a question? Director Elliott, please.
Thank you.
I'll put myself on the speakers list.
Yeah, thank you. So I was curious about um. Your priorities for employee employee well- wellness and reconciliation and wondering what kinds of actions are kind of in your plan to help address those ones.
Well, okay, so uh in regards to employee wellness. We uh. Um so for employee wellness, uh we have different uh. Programs within the RCMP that we encourage for our mental well being, uh so it's more or less a play on on uh encouraging members to continue with. Uh with uh participating uh in our various mental health programs. And then, of course, we look at uh our overall well being in regards to resourcing and things of that source. Uh. Overtime, things like that. So it's it's a very generalized employee wellness program, so. It's not too much specifically I can speak to to that. Uh reconciliation, we have Constable Chris Becker, uh who's our Indigenous Policing Services Officer in Klauhaman. And so he works closely with the Klauhaman uh nation in terms of uh. Putting together different priorities, he works with the Skill Builders uh program, he is uh. Works closely with Verna Francis with the Justice uh Committee out there. Um and uh really liaises continuously through the community there. And then, of course, there's uh us employees uh at the detachment, uh attending cultural awareness uh. Training that they have there, uh there was some in January. And then uh I believe there were some in the fall as well, so we've been trying to send our, all of our members to those, that type of programming. Uh to assist us and understand the community. And working with them.
Okay, um so I have a couple of questions as well, um Sergeant, the you've raised a number of new programs which sound very exciting. The Situation Table sounds like it's going to be of huge um benefit to this region. Um the Fraud Awareness Program, the Home and Personal Safety. My my question is, can you bring some of those programs out to Texada? We have a community of seniors who often feel very vulnerable. And these education tools would be very uh useful uh for them.
Yes, uh I I did speak with Constable Perry about all of these programs going into uh onto Texada. Um. She has participated, uh it would have been last fall with uh. The community, I think it was with the Community Policing Committee there, she helped present in regards, it might have been.
Yeah, there is a Texada Community Policing Committee, yeah, yeah.
Um. And yeah, absolutely, um that's something we've discussed, uh the the Don't Hug Doug, she's already liaised with the. School staff there in regards to providing that information, and then the uh, you know, she said she's in the planning process. For the uh the fraud discussions and uh community safety.
That's great news. I encourage uh you and her to, you know, uh do as much as you can in that regard, education is amazing. Um so my my final question is about the staffing at the Texada Detachment. Um which was, of course, the subject of a presentation at UBC um that I gave, and I was very excited to hear that people have actually. You know, listened and responded, so I'm just curious to know um what that is going to look like.
At this point, it's it's the status quo, there's been no discussion about removing the members from the island, it's uh. Uh the RCMP in the district is well aware of where uh the community. Communities on Texada sit in re- uh in relation to that, um. We have a new district officer within our island district, uh and I'm. I haven't spoken with her and I don't know if Staff. We have spoken with her in regards to what. She, her thoughts are on the matter. The end of the day, it does come down to the province making that decision. So uh and I don't know, you know, what where they would sit with it either, but right now, as of today, there is no discussion of. Moving the members off of that island. Off of your island.
Okay, thank you. The other factor of that is employee wellness too, and the fact that the officers can be on call. Twenty four seven for a long period of time, and that's not good for them either, so.
That's right, the province did provide uh the detachment with two more provincial positions to assist with. Uh once we're fully staffed to to assist with uh maybe spelling uh the two members on the island off, giving them a little bit more free time.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions from directors? Director Gisborne?
Thank you, um thank you for your presentation. Uh taking a look at your numbers from south of town. Uh calls going from a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and forty three. Uh I know there's breakdowns for kind of the whole region, but I'm wondering. Uh do you have any insight into what those type of calls are that are happening south of town that are increasing? If you if you don't have the idea off the top of your head, that's fine.
Well, yeah, off the top of my head, I can say that we did have a uh. The numbers aren't are, these aren't major numbers, so. There, there was a a group of individuals that were residing down uh down south that that did create. Uh a number of. Calls that we typically wouldn't see, so sometimes that happens. A region, we might have some folks that move into an area and then we end up. Responding to a lot of calls for a short period of time and then folks move on. So that, in this situation, uh looking at. Uh. You know. Where people were residing at a specific time in that quarter, um. Yeah, there's there's no doubt in my mind that it was involving a certain smaller group of individuals that since moved on.
So a couple of folks can result in a increase in calls.
Very much so.
Yeah, we we see similar statistics in municipalities, and I guess it makes sense, we would see similar issues in rural areas.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, uh later on in our agenda today, we actually have a staff report in relation to. Uh dangerous dogs and dog control issues, and in that report, it talks about. Uh the authority of peace officers, which I presume that is the RCMP, and I'm just wondering. Uh what kind of calls have you gotten? What kind of proactive plans do you have? Because, you know, we do get a lot of new folks moving into the area, some folks think that there aren't any rules in relation to dogs and. As our staff report wants out, uh there are, I'm just wondering, uh what kind of proactive steps have have you guys taken or do you have any? And what kind of calls are you getting in relation to dogs?
So in relation to dogs in the regional district, it's it's always been a tough one for us because. I think what is it, the community charter, I believe, there is a a community charter in the in the province that kind of falls to.
Yeah.
Um and it it uh it's it's just, it it makes it difficult for us to kind of. Fully determine where we stand. If uh if there's a serious dog issue, uh dog bite. Uh dangerous dog, uh there are channels that we can go through Crown Council and deeming a dog dangerous and then. Some some remedies to that. Um proactively. We do see occasional dog animal calls. But we're, you know, and we seem to be seeing more, um. But we don't have anything, typically what we'll do is we'll respond to each call separately, educate the folks, the parties involved. And uh and try to go forward from there, but that's not to say that uh. Once. Something more robust is put in place. We couldn't educate the public a little bit more in regards to what our authorities are as police, uh. Obviously. Black and white bylaws are very nice to have because it really makes things clear for for us as peace officers. Um. Other than that, we kind of work as best we can uh to 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 manage each situation, they're all, and they're all. Very different, so. And we don't have a a ton of them, we don't have a lot. So. That's kind of where we're at right now. It's a frustrating one for us, trust me, we, when these calls come, nobody wants to to respond because they they can be very difficult to manage. Families, people, their pets, uh but there are times where we have to 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 respond and and a lot of times. Or not a lot, but sometimes we'll have to run through our Crown Council and uh and and try and do that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Director Dowd.
Yeah, I've got uh got a couple of questions, one one too hard and one probably harder. Uh the first one is about. The use of percentage changes in the figures because I, you know, I I've always said when you. Weird things happen when you start talking about percentages and comparing percentages of one thing with percentages of another. Doesn't always give you a close. Thing, and I think, thinking in the case of the numbers we've got in crime in Powell River. It's tend to exaggerate what's happening. I'm looking at the bike thefts going from two thefts. In twenty twenty three to six in twenty twenty four is a two hundred percent increase. I'm thinking if you compare that with the city of Vancouver and you say two hundred percent increase in bike thefts. It's probably more like going from five thousand to ten thousand bike thefts. Or five thousand to fifteen thousand bike thefts in the city of Vancouver. Uh you know, the question is really, don't you think that it kind of distorts the changes in crime and makes it makes it seem. Either a much bigger increase or a much bigger decrease. Than what it would be when you just look at the numbers or how you use those to compare with other communities. Well, Vancouver is going up two percent and. All River is going up two hundred, so we have a problem in Powell River. How do you deal with those?
Yeah, I you know, I I try and look at the numbers myself, not the percentages, uh unless we're dealing with a very large number. When I presented, I tried to stick it's to the numbers, understanding and knowing that, well, the percentages really paint. Can paint a picture to some folks, uh exaggerating the the level of crime, um. And and that being said, communities. And crime are, they're all relative, you know, big cities have lots of crime, smaller communities. You know. Not as much crime, but it might be seem like a lot of crime for the community itself, um. But uh incomparable, I I didn't create this uh report, uh so I I don't. I can't really speak to what the other communities do for, I've presented in the other communities that I've I've worked in, uh these types of reports. And uh I've always just.
My my question is, I assume that at some point, the sergeants of the various detachments get together and compare numbers. Does that happen?
It does, kind of, it, uh we we do receive information from other communities in general terms. Um but uh. Most of the time, we. Everyone sticks to their own community and we look at general trends, like uh we look at a district level, which is Vancouver Island and Powell River. And so we'll we'll kind of compare and contrast in general terms statistically. Uh unless there's an obvious, uh you know, uh traveling break in enter group or traveling uh. Beef or theft ring. Then then you you kind of dig down a little bit deeper into the numbers.
And my other question was going to be with the with the change in policing in Surrey from the RCMP. To the Surrey Police, uh I think there's going to be some additional RCMP. Officers who are looking for a place to be, and it's always been difficult from the past reports for the local detachment to get. The complement that you're budgeted for up to full staffing, so do you think? With the changes in Surrey, that might make it easier to get up to full staffing here in the Bell River area?
Well, we were hoping that would be the case, but. Uh from the information that we receive in regards to the staffing, the outflow of RCMP officers from the Surrey detachment. Um most are staying within the lower mainland, they've already, you know. Set roots, and so they'll go from one that detachment to another. That being said, Surrey detachment uh is being staffed again out of our depot or training. Because of the current state that they're in in regards to, is it going SPS? Is it gonna go RCMP? So. Because things are tied up in the courts, who knows how long this is gonna take, everything is kind of remaining. The same.
Everybody's staffing up.
So but but what we are, we are getting uh. I can speak to uh the recruiting in that, we we are seeing record amounts of. All PPOs, um they're experienced police officers from different uh municipal organizations. That are transferring or lateraling into the RCMP, so I think the recent reports were. I think they're gonna sign over sixteen, uh which is, you know, it's it's for for lateral policing over is is a good number, um and plus uh. Recruiting out of British Columbia right now, uh if you are recruited. Uh out of B C uh to go to depot, training in the RCMP, you are guaranteed a spot back in B C. So B C is the largest uh. This division within the RCMP, we have the most police officers and we do the most recruiting, so. We're looking at close to half of every troop that goes to depot will be coming back to British Columbia, so. And that is just starting, the results of that is just starting to happen now, so we're gonna see a large uh. We're told anyway, large waves of recruits coming to to B C. So. Uh obviously, we'll we'll be trying to take as many as we can.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Director. Um uh um C A O has a question.
Yes, thank you, done through the chair. Maybe for only my benefit, but what is the definition of uttering threats?
The definition of uttering threats.
What constitutes that?
Well, if I had a criminal code in front of me, I could read it out to you, but it is a uh making a threat. Uh injury, harm, uh death. Uh to a person or threatening to damage, destroy property. Um. And uh this should uh be a component of uh the 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 receiver of the threat feeling fearful. Uh in regards to those statements, those types of statements.
Right. And that would be to any member of the public? That would, is that what we're driving at here versus just utter that police officers?
Oh, in general, yeah, no, if if it was utter, yeah, it has to be uttered. It can be uttered to a group.
Okay.
Absolutely. You can threaten a group of people for sure.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Has everyone um who wants to ask a first question done so? So, all right, the second round, Director Gisborne, but please do keep it short. We have an unregistered delegation and a long agenda.
Something that came up, um I believe Director Doubt's question that sparked a idea in my mind. Um we see these statistical numbers jump and what I'm hearing is sometimes it's just a couple of individuals that result in these increase in calls. And when we get these statistics, um they look at, you know, number of calls or number of incidences. And I'm thinking, you know, from the regional district side, we put a lot of money into, you know. Improving the social fabric of the community or harm reduction, things like that. And I'm wondering if like kind of the repeat offenders. Statistic could also be tracked. So that way, as we take a look, you know, quarter over quarter, year over year. We can go like, okay, you know, there was twelve individuals that were responsible for a number of calls and now it's going down to eleven or ten or 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 something like that. So that way, uh we as a community. And you know, when we're working with nonprofits and harm reduction, we can actually go like, okay, is what we're doing working? Or are we seeing those numbers still increase? Because it's hard to, you know, permit. That from the numbers that we get in terms of this number of calls, because as you you were saying, sometimes it's just one or two individuals that create a huge number of calls. So I'm just wondering, would that be a possibility uh to just kind of keep track of? The number of repeat offenders, I guess you could say, or or not getting into any personal information, but to. Kind of see the temperature check of the community as, you know, are those individuals continuing to repeat or are other methods uh? Reducing those calls, because hopefully they're getting on the right path. So I'm just, is that something that?
I think we understand the question.
Yeah, no, that that can uh that can, uh obviously, that's something that can potentially happen. It's a it's a very labor and. Intensive process to monitor all of that. But uh you know, that's something I can discuss. With the staff week when he returns from his trip and see if he uh is interested in thinking that.
Thank you. And seeing no further ends, um Sergeant Currie, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. It's been very helpful to us to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Now, Directors, we have an unregistered delegation, um Leslie Armstrong, who has asked to speak to us regarding dangerous dogs. Um do we have agreement that we will let her speak? Dogs. Okay, all right. So we'll welcome Leslie Armstrong to come and speak to us. You have ten minutes for your presentation.
Um I'm here basically to plant a seed. Um I have correspondence with me was now and. Director Brander about um being attacked by three dogs. Um I was one of the people who reported it to the police, but um I thought. It would be a better idea to speak to your, some of the organizations were involved, like the Powell River Trail Riders um. Horse Council B C, we have the Recreation Director has moved here and um. Just to plant a seed of um proactive. Um education in this city and district, because a lot of the trails uh in the city segue into the district. And vice versa. Um last June, um Horse Council B C had a clinic which ran all day. And they organized uh groups of bicyclists, horseback riders, uh hikers, a couple of people with dogs. Um some people from the quad club and um some dirt bike riders. And ran a series of workshops all day. There was a spillover from the market because it occurred at the same time. So there was a lot of education involved, I think. At one point, I was riding past. Dozens of people who are fascinated to watch this. Um so the seed that I'm planting and I plan to put together a formal written proposal. Um I just I've been talking back and forth with Horse Council B C and the Trail Riders to get some consensus, which is, you know, isn't always easy. But um the co-facilitators um would like to give another clinic during the Fall Fair. September fourteenth, fifteenth and run it for two full days, uh all day, each day. And um. Horse Council B C, um this clinic that we had last year, it was smaller because it was the pilot project. Um it has been so popularly picked up that it's being run in four districts um in twenty twenty-four. So they've run out of funds to um to co-facilitate another clinic. But um education and 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 bringing the numbers up of people who are aware of this problem. Um is, I think, a really proactive way to go. And there are signs that don't invite libel. There are signs out there and I have a collection of them. From people I know in other districts that do not invite libel. But anyways, um just um. Horse Council B C and the Trail Riders and the facilitators and the rec director. Um have invited the city and the district to cosponsor. Um the two-day event uh this September's Fall Fair, and I wasn't sure if you met in the summer. But um I understand that you do, so um there's plenty of time to think about it. It's not difficult to organize. The project is already being piloted. It's formatted. And it's 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 very good. It's very professional. It's very positive. Um so that's my seed.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah.
Brilliant. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Um what is the name of this workshop?
Oh, um it was originally called Hoofs, Whoops, Heels and Wheels, I think. But now I think it's called Multi-Trail User. Clinic, but I will leave, um I will put together a package where all the information is is presented. It was really lovely, um well photographed, documented and um, yeah.
And the focus is not specifically dogs, but all of the users?
It's about all, yeah, I didn't say mention that. It's about all users learning how to respect each other who all want to share the same space. And it can be done very, very successfully. I mean, I was ambushed by three dogs and a man who took off in the bushes when he saw that. Myself and my friend had been on horses that were both attacked. Both horses bolted, both horses dumped us, and this man looked at that wreckage and decided to take off with his dogs. So um he's obviously the two percent that doesn't follow rules and that's kind of rogue out there. Most people want to know what to do. And most people really want to do the best thing.
So then my follow-up question is, um the district director for Horse Council B C has moved to our area?
Yeah. Oh, she's the Recreation Director, so she orchestrates all the workshops and clinics throughout B C.
Okay, Recreation Director for Horse Council B C?
Yes, correct.
And?
Sarah? Yes, Sarah Allison, yeah. And um when I put together the package, I'll include all names and contact information and um but um. They are supportive of this cosponsorship. They've just run out of funds because. The project is so popular, they've spent all their funds for the year. But we could get hundreds of people spilling over to look at our clinic. And not only that, more people who know will tell people who are behaving badly. You know that you should have your dogs leashed. Don't you know this? People will tell people. The more they're educated.
Okay, thank you. Director Lennox and Director Gisborne.
Director Lennox. Thank you, Chair. Um and thank you for your presentation. As somebody who's uh ridden horseback, quad, walk dogs in those same trails, I I echo. Uh some of those, you know, situations that you're in, and I'm glad that you weren't more seriously hurt in your case, but we do hear of this on a regular basis. Um. I want to uh, you know, applaud you for your efforts at actually trying to take action on a. An issue that's very difficult, um as you've heard from the previous presentation, um you know, um. That's on the after the incident has occurred. And so your ideas speak to me about education is really, it was really proactive. Um. So I know that you've worked with the Horse Council and and that sounds good. And O RUG seems to be uh also a an organization. Those user groups that you mentioned are also part of that O RUG group. So hopefully, um that's what you're working with. So looking forward to your uh ongoing work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Lennox. Director Gisborne.
Thank you so much for coming in and it's y- your presentation actually ties into what I was asking the RCMP about, about being proactive. So this is perfect. And I think it's kind of fortuitous because yesterday we had a lot of delegates come in for grant requests. You know, different initiatives in the community wanting money. And I'm hearing that the major barrier right now to offer this program is finance. Um I know, I believe it's after the deadline for our first intake. We do have a second intake in August, but the board can also. Do things differently if we want. Um so what kind of money are we looking at, like in terms of amount for annual? And uh would you be willing to work with our wonderful staff to do like a grant? Uh request and then, because it's difficult for the regional district to provide funding because of our service silos, like in terms of staff resources. But we do offer uh grants, so that way another entity or nonprofit can can handle it.
I I I don't know the amount and that would be in the proposal. And you would need the grant application in by what date?
Uh.
Thirty-first.
August thirty-first? I'm pretty sure that can be.
That's the second intake. There was an earlier intake with a deadline of March thirty-first.
Unfortunately, I didn't have my accident until after the first intake.
Ms Green, did you have a comment?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Through the chair, no, uh the chair is correct. The deadline for the second intake is August thirty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Um I'm not seeing anyone else on the speaker list. So Leslie, I want to thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for accepting.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to um no unfinished business. There are five items of correspondence. Is there any business arising from these items? All right, seeing no hands. We can move on to seven point one, which is business arising from one item. And that is the correspondence from Kim Markell looking for um a representative to participate in the homelessness. Task force. So um there is a motion with a blank space. I would be willing to put my name forward if that was um.
Helpful. Make the motion with uh Director McCormick filling in the blank space.
And seconded by Director Lennox, I saw um discussion on that motion. Director Falls.
Uh thank you. And I think this is a great thing and I really appreciate. It uh you willing to step up, Director McCormick or Chair McCormick? And uh I think uh this will hopefully be a very productive task force.
Well, hopefully it will do some good. That's the whole point of it. So, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Chair. Um which brings us down to reports, eight point one, uh which is a report from B C Transit. And I'd like to welcome Rob Ringma from B C Transit, who is going to make a a presentation for us regarding. This report.
Yeah, good morning, uh Chair.
Good direction.
Good to be back in Powell River to present to you in person. Um you know, I've been on Zoom last couple of times, but it's really great to be in the community. I get spent some time today, um obviously presenting to you and also traveling around. You know, on a couple of different bus routes and and travel the region. So I really appreciate your time today. Um objective of my presentation today is really just walking through. The uh transit update. Thank you so much. Okay, perfect. So um yeah, I want to talk a little bit about ridership, give you a bit of an update on ridership across the province. As well as here locally. Um the business of the day is your annual operating agreement and budget. So just review what your annual operating agreement and budget. Consists of for this year. I'll talk about transit expansions. Um I'll talk about a upcoming transit service review and then uh. Finally touch a little bit on our local government fleet program and and how it will matter to the meeting. So from a provincial perspective, um you know, we are now consistently seen in twenty twenty-four uh ridership above pre-pandemic levels. Um so this will probably be the last time you hear me talk about ridership recovery. Um we're really trying to move forward with just ridership growth in general, because we do feel provincially that we have gotten there. Um and that's been a long kind of arduous road. As you can see by this graph with the drop in twenty twenty and then the successive. Kind of increases in transit ridership uh that have that have come back. So that is a great thing. Um to be quite honest, there is still a lot of transit agencies across North America that have not seen this type of recovery. Um I have to give some kudos to the province in this regard. Um if you, if some of the directors remember. The province actually provided um B C Transit and through to our local governments some uh restart, save restart funds. To help support transit systems as we saw those ridership declines. Um the two key pieces that came with that were to maintain service. And not um increase fares. And I think what we've seen is year over year, we've seen these increases where now we are uh back above. Those uh those uh pre-pandemic levels in twenty nineteen. Um this slide here is Power River Conventional. Um and what you'll see here is again that kind of similar similar dip down. Uh this one is kind of linear from twenty eighteen uh on the left to twenty twenty-three on the right. And uh the Power River Conventional System, which is the fixed route uh system. Um managed and governed by the city of Power River. Um we've seen a nice return to ridership there as well. So very similar to the provincial numbers. We're seeing that we're at, or in some cases, different months, different weeks, above twenty nineteen levels, which is great to see. Um for the rural paratransit system, so the regional district system, um twenty twenty nineteen, we actually saw sixteen thousand seven hundred one rides. Uh that's that green line with the large spike at the top. It was actually one of the highest ridership years that we had seen prior to the pandemic. Um we've seen, you can see uh twenty twenty uh one in yellow. Um and then successive kind of increases. So in twenty twenty-three, we're going to um. We basically uh came in at fifteen thousand uh three hundred and twenty-two rides, so just under the twenty nineteen levels. But as you can see by kind of the growth each year, um I'm pretty sure twenty twenty-four, we will uh will most likely surpass those uh those twenty nineteen levels. So um all good results, very consistent with what we're seeing across the province. Um and obviously, what you can see in this graph, the other little piece I highlight is that is that summer ridership. You can see how the ridership really um jumps up from the. July, August, that's obviously where we put a little bit more uh service on the road. Um and uh and obviously, we have some some uh different traffic, uh mostly probably tourism related that that is utilized in the service. So uh our annual operating agreement, we do, we have a um uh kind of an underlying agreement called the Transit Service Agreement. But every year, uh B C Transit comes back to our local governments, we present our annual operating agreement. That is the yearly cost. Uh that's related to the services that we will work with uh the city of Powell River as our operating partner to deliver in the uh in the region. Um so this year, uh what we do every year is we revise our ridership and ridership and revenue projections based on some of those trends that I just showed you. Uh we adjust uh our operational costs for the fiscal. And then if we have any special initiative funding, um when we implemented. Kind of our next ride system, which has the automatic vehicle locators, you know, that we 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 bundle that cost in provincially and distribute those costs. Across uh across the different systems. When we introduced introduced our Yumo Electronic Fair uh system, we did the, we did the same. So if we look at the numbers uh last year, uh so twenty fiscal and again, um. Easy Transit works on a fiscal calendar year, um sorry, I shouldn't say. Easy Transit works on a fiscal calendar year, um, sorry, I shouldn't say fiscal calendar year, that's a, that's a. Oxymoron, it's a fiscal fiscal year, um, you see twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, and then twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five that I've, uh, highlighted in red. Um, you can see we have booked revenue slightly higher, so do anticipate, uh, continued ridership growth, uh, which then delivers revenue back to the district. Um, just as a reminder, uh, one hundred percent of the revenue proceeds from the transit service come back to the regional district to help offset your transit costs. Um, you'll see your total operating cost slightly higher at three hundred forty-six thousand. Mainly when I look through the numbers, um, it's fuel and maintenance, which are two kind of standard lines that we see, uh, we see kind of slightly increasing, uh, year over year. Um, so for your total costs, being up, uh, to about three hundred seventy-nine thousand. When we translate that down and we divide out the BC Transit share of costs, you'll see BC Transit is going to cover a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Um, and the net municipal share of costs, so that's the cost to the, uh, regional district is a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Now, the only thing, if if anybody's, um, kind of sharp on the math, uh, the math doesn't quite make sense, because. You'll see your net municipal share of costs going up, um, over ten thousand dollars, but the actual costs, total costs only going up, uh, oh, four thou- five thousand dollars. And that's because last year we exhausted the final ten thousand dollars of that safe restart funding that I had mentioned, so of that subsidy kind of. Uh, art, well, subsidized last year to that two hundred fifty-two thousand, so, you know, all in all, uh, I would say transit costs this year are pretty much flat with, uh, with last year. And, uh, they're also below, uh, what we had budgeted in our three-year budget, so we provide you with a three-year kind of rolling budget in, uh, in the fall. Um, and that was, we had booked at about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and, uh, current budget is looking like a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, so, uh, that should be well within your, uh. Your budgeted amounts at this time, which is always good. Um, a couple initiatives I want to talk about, uh, the Town Center Mall Transit Exchange, so this is one that we worked very closely with the, uh, the mall, the developer. Uh, the city of Powell River. Uh, Town Center Mall, uh. Transit Exchange is a key exchange for the entire system, uh, every one of our buses kind of meets at that location. People transfer from, uh, the rural paratransit system into the conventional system and vice versa at this exchange, so it's really, really, uh, important exchange to, uh, to. Uh, BC Transit and and the region, um, I think it's also an important, um, exchange for the mall and the mall owner and developer, um, for the traffic that it, uh, that it likely drives to the mall. Um, so they have, um, they are basically in the process of, as you would know, uh, rebuilding. Certain portions of that mall, they've relocated the transit exchange, we've worked with them to find a location that is not going to affect our travel times and increase the costs. Of transit, of course, as you can imagine, when every single bus, every single day goes through one exchange, if you move it even thirty seconds. A minute down the road, that all compounds over time, um, which can add to costs and 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 affect our on-time performance, so. We've come to a really great spot, um, and we're building a really great exchange with what you see there is what we call Sawtooth Bus Design. Um, and just a good collaboration effort between, again, private, uh, private and public, uh, partnership. Um, in terms of trying to, you know, come up with the best design that's going to, um, assist the mall, assist, uh, passengers and assist, um, obviously BC Transit and our partners. So currently that is slated to be completed at the end of June, and I'm looking forward to maybe coming out and, uh, cutting a ribbon or two when, uh, when they open that up. So from a transit expansion perspective, um, as you, uh, may recall, for the last two years, um, with the downturn in ridership. Um, we have, uh, not seen a lot, uh, in terms of, uh, transit expansion funding. Um, the first year, I would say, uh, of the pandemic, um, you know. Ridership was so low that, uh, that there really, um. Was 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 not a lot of, um, I would say, kind of appetite for expanding transit, it's a lot of different systems, we were just trying to hold on and and gain that ridership back. But obviously, as you've seen in the graphs, we've seen ridership return. And that's created increased pressure on, uh, on, uh, on expansion, so after two years of ridership recovery. Um, we've seen those, those, um, that ridership increase. And what we saw this year through our transit improvement program was just unprecedented, uh, demand for, uh, for transit expansions, so. Typically, what we see over that time is the demand for expansions actually decrease as we go through the tips process, this year we saw it increase. Uh, the province has allocated significant resources, so about a hundred and sixty million dollars towards transit expansions. But what we found was those, uh, demand outstripped the resources. So unfortunately, we had to rely on a transit evaluation process that we've always had in the background. That measures such things as ridership productivity, um, we look for different systems that have any critical priorities, so I'll use the Fraser Valley Express as an example. Uh, we have standing room only on the Fraser Valley Express traveling, you know, ninety kilometers an hour down the number one highway, so from a safety perspective, you have to prioritize some of those, uh, some of those pieces. Um, so long and the short of it, unfortunately, the additional bus request for Tuxedo was not able to be accommodated this year, so I apologize for that. Uh, I know that has been a request from this board for the last three years. Uh, I'm disappointed that we were unable to, um, to assist with that request, um, but what we will do. Uh, going forward, and this is, you've probably seen this chart from me before, this is kind of our. Our wheel of, uh, of our expansion program timeline, is we will put that back into the mix this year, I will work with staff here at the regional district. Um, and then my other, the other piece that I think we're going to look at is that bus again unlocks, uh, our ability to expand some of our frequency on the other paratransit routes. So I think what I'll do this year is I'll come back, I'll I'll have our team work on costing not only the additional bus to, um, Tuxedo. But also if we get that bus, um, because I don't want to see us fall behind. Maybe we we will cost out some additional frequency, uh, on the routes twelve and thirteen that would go along with that bus. And then this board can decide, depending on the investment level, what, uh, what level they'd like to see this year. But the key piece that I want to explain here is at the very top of our kind of improvement timeline is referring to available planning dockets, documents and service reviews. And we haven't.
Ten minutes.
Thank you, thank you, um, so just real quickly, um, we are going to embark on a transit service review, um, which I think is long overdue for the region. There's been a lot of different, uh, planning work done, uh, this district is also, regional district has also done their own planning work in terms of your, uh, on-demand feasibility study. City Powell River has done, um, some work with WSP as well as their Zanga Bus. So what we want to try to do from BC Transit perspective is bring all of that information together, bring some expertise from BC Transit. And try to come up with a cohesive plan for the region from a transit perspective. That'll help us deliver better service across the region, so that would still probably remain. A combination of those different, uh, tools that we have or different service types in terms of conventional transit, on-demand. Rural paratransit, and of course, uh, our our friends at HandyDart, so that'll involve, um, community engagement, so you'll see full public engagement, you'll see, uh, key stakeholder engagement. That'll include, uh, First Nations engagement, we'll do some open house work, and we'll really work to identify those service priorities.
Hang on, Mr. Ringma, I just want to make sure, um, do I have the agreement of board members that we will continue on? Okay, I'm seeing, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you so much, yes, my apologies for.
Procedureal.
Absolutely, um, so this is kind of the timeline, so we're looking to start that work, uh, right away in earnest, uh, in terms of, um, starting to put together. Our engagement and working group, then this fall, what you'll see is us commence with the public engagement, um, then we will do some open house work. Then we will, um, put together a report that will present both to the, uh, city of Powell River as well as the regional district, uh, for adoption. And what it'll do is it'll really outline those next steps in terms of, uh, expansions and prioritize those expansions, so that we have a good, solid. Uh, expansion plan moving forward, so that this board understands what the investment trajectory looks like, um, they can see where, um, where those investments will go. Um, and ultimately have the final decision on what those, uh, transit expansion, um, items look like. Um, real quickly, just to finish off, I just wanted to give a quick update on fleet electrification, so we are entering, uh, last time I presented this council, I spoke very high level. At electrification of our fleet, um, we are moving forward with phase one at this point, um, so that's to bring in, uh, heavy-duty bus, uh, replacements. With overnight, uh, charging in depot, uh, phase two would see us bring in more layover charging, so that's charging at, uh, transit exchanges and on-street. That would allow us to expand the network, um, phase three, you'd see us, uh, decrease, uh, so right now we're decreasing our diesel bus use. Phase three would see us decrease our CNG bus use, which we're obviously getting some GHG reductions through our CNG fleet. And then obviously phase four, where we can move to a fully electric, uh, fleet. Um, so I'm happy to say that Power River is included in the initial rollout, uh, as you can see here, there's, uh, nine locations that will be in that phase one. Power River will be included. This is a quick, uh, quick look at what some of the charging infrastructure is, so we've been working very closely with the city of Powell River and their transit yard. To make sure that we have the space and the ability to, uh, to do this, so we we thank them for their, uh, their patience and their, their work with us as we work to develop this, because you can see. It's a little bit more complicated than, uh, than a plug, uh, plug-in at your home, or even, let's say, a Tesla or a li- level-two charger at home. And right now, we're kind of at about sixty percent design here locally in Powell River, um, we'll, uh, quickly finish up a hundred percent design. We'll start construction sometime in twenty twenty-five for the charging infrastructure, we'll get the charging services implemented, uh, in twenty twenty-five, and right now. We're just in the final throes of our bus procurement, we've identified, uh, two, um, bus, uh, suppliers. That we're going to be able to move forward with in terms of procuring, uh, battery electric buses. I will say for this first phase, it is heavy-duty buses, so the regional district, of course, you use light-duty buses. There aren't many viable light-duty electric bus options yet, but as we know, technology is moving at an increasingly rapid rate. Uh, and I think once we get the charging infrastructure there, it really does open the door for us to allow, um, to accommodate several different bus types as we move forward. So we'll continue that process, we need to order our buses, we need to install the charging equipment. Uh, but really happy to be here today to let, uh, to let all of the directors know that, uh, that we're happy to be partnering with, partnering with Powell River. Um, to be able to bring these, uh, these buses in our first phase, so thank you for letting me go over my time, uh, at this time I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ringma, so I'll open it up to directors, Director Brander.
Sure, uh, thanks for coming today, appreciate the update, um. Just, I understand that the areas north of Seashell, uh, aren't part of the service, and therefore there's no bus service up there. I was just wondering if there's any, if any consideration has been given to say, uh, one or two days per week, just sending one up to the ferry. If we can have people transit from here down to the city.
Yeah, thank you for your question, I think as part of the service review, we will explore, uh, a bit more of that kind of, it would have been mentioned on that slide, unfortunately, I kind of, I rolled through it pretty quickly, but. We will look at ferry connections and some of the opportunities there, um, the challenge still currently remains, and so, uh, just to to back up. We have aligned our schedule to the Sunshine, uh, Coast Connector schedule coming from the Sunshine Coast side, um, but of course, that's a private operator that doesn't operate. Every day of the year, um, mainly a seasonal service, uh, the challenge still remains on the Sunshine Coast side, uh, I think it's area, uh, Area A. Uh, which doesn't currently pay into the transit services on the Sunshine Coast side. So I know the Sunshine Coast Regional District continues to, uh, explore options there, um, potentially a feasibility study down the road at some, at some point. Um, but it would take that involvement of, uh, Area A and the Sunshine Coast Regional District for us to be able to be in a position to move that forward, but. Um, the topic comes up on a regular basis, and we, we, we definitely, um, are ready, willing and able to. To work on any kind of feasibility work, to see what that service would look like, uh, even from a, a very incremental or initial phase, and what the cost would be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Director Elliott, then I'll put myself on the list and Director Gisborne.
Okay, good to see you again, um. So I I noticed a couple of things that I didn't really pick up on the first time around. One of them was, I've seen that you have local government engagement and. Working group, and I'm just curious about, is that something you work with staff to fill out, or is that something you're looking to us to participate in? Is that a, what level is that at?
Yeah, so, uh, from a local government perspective, uh, staff will be actively involved throughout the entire process, so we actually create a, uh, a, a key working group. Um, of, uh, key stakeholders, uh, that would include staff, um, we will engage. Uh, elected officials, not necessarily in the early phases, but once we start to bring the draft, um. Service review together, uh, we usually do kind of a check and balance with local government, just to make sure we're on the right track, uh, that we haven't missed anything. Um, and then, of course, we'll present the, uh, the final report, uh, for review and and potential adoption with, uh, with local government.
And then my follow-up question also for the service review, um, I know it started like now already. And it's continuing through to about this time next year, and then, um, improvements as a result of, the result of that service review, would they be. Expecting to maybe come in twenty twenty and a year later or two years later, or what are you, what are you looking at?
Yeah, great question, thank you, Director.
Specifically, I'm worried about the Zanga Buses.
Yes, of course, yeah, so the, the key, the key piece there in that timeline, um, that's, uh, you know, if you review it back in your package. Is we are starting this spring with a completion after adoption by local governments of next spring. That lines itself up with our transit expansion process, so usually we start our transit expansion process in the spring. We cost out different initiatives, so that service review will give us some initiatives, we will then cost those out for local government. Local government will then decide on which initiatives they approve, that we will then go seek, uh, additional provincial funding for, to then be implemented the following year, so. Um, again, whilst working off a fiscal calendar, um, if we can have those, um, that review done. Uh, and go into our twenty twenty-five Transit Improvement Program, it would be for implementation in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Alright.
So in the meantime, sorry, just to finish that, that train of thought, in the meantime, I will still come back to this board and to Power River with expansion options for that gap year, the next year.
This fall.
Yeah, this fall, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'll be quick, and then Director Gisborne is following me, um, so my question pertains to ridership numbers. And how they're used as a criteria for expansion of service. Um, the issue with the Tuxedo route is that you don't have people left behind waiting for the bus, it's all done by reservation. So there's no way of knowing what the un-net demand is. So my question is, how can we get that number, how can we connect with the person on the phone who's receiving the request to find out how many? Because people book for multi-weeks at a time, and newcomers can't get on, so.
Yes. Director McCormick, I apologize that we do not have books for you for this year for Tuxedo, um, uh, so to answer your question, um, one of the key measures we do look at is what we call ridership productivity. So to your point, uh, how would, um. Uh, the regional district ever compete against the central Fraser Valley in terms of ridership when it comes to expansions? Uh, what we actually look more at is what we call ridership productivity, so that's for every service hour. That is available, how many rides are on that bus per service hour, so it kind of equals out some of that activity. Uh, but you hit on a very good point, is, is what we don't have a good gauge on is, is what we call latent demand, which is, um, even if a bus is full. Let's say a bus is full, how many more people would have been on that bus if we had provided an additional bus or fifteen-minute, you know, better frequency? Um, what I can say is, you know, although we've had this evaluation process kind of in the, in the, in the background, uh, for multiple years. This is actually the first year we've actually had to implement it. And obviously, we're getting feedback from some of the communities that were not successful, um, on opportunities to revise that evaluation process. And we're committed to, um, listening to those communities, looking at our own processes and making sure that it, uh. It is equal and and well-distributed, uh, so we can make sure we're getting those, those resources, resources out to the communities that need them.
So the numbers will be tracked, then the numbers of requests, they come in?
What I, what I can say is we can work, and we do work very closely with the city of Powell River, and they, uh, as our operating company, and they do a very good job of tracking ridership. Um, I can easily, uh, work with staff there to see if we can get some sort of, uh, barometer on what the, um, what the bookings and those numbers look like. I would just have to work with them to provide that, so I can, I can do that.
Thank you, I'll be in touch with you about that, Director Gisborne, you're next.
Yeah, um. As an extension on to Director Brander's point, uh, when we have these communities that are. Disconnected, and we have to wait for electoral areas to participate in the service. I I have a real problem with that, because that is a very old-fashioned way of thinking of the outlying electoral areas. Are joining the service to connect to the municipal hub, but when you have intercity connections, say. Uh, Campbell River, Courtney kind of thing wanting to connect to Naimo. The question becomes, well, you have a, a small electoral area in between, and the residents go, well, why should we be paying so that the municipalities can connect to each other? And that's the exact situation that's happening down on the Lower Sunshine Coast, and I've spoken to, uh, the directors down there, and that barrier for. Electoral Area A on the Sunshine Coast is very high, the public down there are saying, we don't want to pay for a service. So that the Cathet Regional District can access Vancouver. Do you have any alternative, like, are we going to have to pay for their service, and and i- i- is that the only way around it, that's, that's my first question?
Yep, no, thank you. Yep. No, thank you, Director Gifford, for your question. So just, just to be, um, one hundred percent clear, that's not a, the, the model that we're talking about there is not a B C transit driven model. That is coming from the, uh, regional district that's trying to figure out how to best support that, that service. Um, if they can find a way to support the service, then we go to the province and try to get the matching funding to, to support that. Um, but you bring up a really good point, which is, um, there's a continued debate and discussion about inter-regional transit. And the inequities between, um, First Nations communities and major centers, uh, between major centers and the smaller communities in between. Um, there are some creative models that, that again, um, B C Transit has worked with, with, um, our local government partners to provide some of those services. Sometimes that means, um, a municipality or a regional district, um, footing more of the bill. Um, because they see the, the, the value in, in the larger service or, um, or potentially, um, helping support that service to get it running. And then looking for additional funds down the road. Um, I can also tell you that the province, this has been highlighted to the province. Um, the, the disparity, uh, issue, uh, in terms of being able to fund transit for small communities. And I do know the province is, and I think maybe even through U B C M, there has been some work done, um, to look for, uh, additional or different provincial funding. Uh, streams to help support those types of inter-regional services. So, um. That, that discussion has been, has been brought up and I appreciate you bringing it up today. Um, and, uh, we're hoping to continue to work with the province to see what other creative options might, uh, might be made available.
Okay. And then my second question would be quick. Um, glad you mentioned U B C M. We recently had A V I C C. Uh, speaking to other elected officials down there, there's a lot of excitement around Vancouver Island Rail. And a lot of conversations around light rail in municipalities and just areas in general. Does B C Transit have light rail as any part of their planning structure? Or is it still very much, uh, auto-centric bus focused at this time?
Yeah, um, we are, we are.
Service for these.
We, we are, we are vehicle agnostic. Um, so B C Transit actually under the B C Transit Act could provide, uh, rail service. Um, if we, if we chose to do so. Um, my general take, and I'm no expert because I'm not on the planning team. Um, but my general take is there is a ridership threshold that needs to be hit before, uh, rail makes kind of economic sense. Um, so there is still the economic debate. Um, I think emotionally rail always has this, this appeal. Um, I, I remember taking to be a rail when I was a kid all on the island. Um, and I think it always will have that, that appeal. Um, but I think at the end of the day, you know, B C Transit really, we try to analyze the demand. Um, the, the available resources, the infrastructure that's available. And we try to determine what is the most efficient way to serve the need in that, in that individual community. I think if the need gets to the point where, uh, the expense and the frequency of light rail makes sense. Uh, I don't think B C Transit's, uh, would, would ever say that we're only, uh, bus, uh, bus centric at that point.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's good to hear because of, there's the new provincial legislation around housing densification and transit oriented development and light rail and all that stuff ties together. So. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, our C A O is next and then I'll recognize Director Elliott.
Thanks to the chair. One question, you, you said something that piqued my curiosity. You said, uh, when addressing Director Gisborne that it could be that local governments would have to foot more of the bill. How can that be when it's my understanding that we're prescript, uh, pretty much prescriptive in how much we can afford to give you? Because when we wanted to give you more, you said, no, I can't do that because I'm bound by this to say that we can only add up to what we say we can. Therefore your percentage factor has to be equal.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Aggie for the, for the question. Sorry, when I said local government's having to pony up more. Uh, what I actually meant was where you were in a situation where you have different areas and, uh, different area, um, contributions. Sometimes those other areas might have to foot the bill for the one area that may be resource light. So sorry, that was not, I, I apologize for that if I, if I made that, uh, if I made that, uh, didn't make that distinction. Um, but to your point on expansions, yes, you, you are, you are correct. The way the B C funding, uh, B C transit funding model works. Is we need to have approval from local governments for the cost of a transit expansion. Uh, we do that through a, a transit improvement, uh, memorandum of understanding. So I will come back to this board, uh, in the fall with a costed platform for the Texas A and B us for maybe some additional hours for the route twelve, route thirteen. Um, and then once this board has signed off on that, then we sum up all of those requests and present those to the province. And request the matching funding from the province. And this year, the challenge was, is that the demand of expansions, the province came to the table with over a hundred and sixty million dollars in expansion funding. But the challenge was because of the unprecedented demand and, and request for, um, for resources from all of different communities across First Columbia. We had inequity in the amount of requests we had versus the amount of resources we had. But you are, you are correct that you, you unfortunately locally. This community has done everything they need to do to support transit. I've been in front of this board multiple times. You've supported, uh, transit expansion and, and, and again, it's, um. It's sometimes challenging for me because I feel like I'm part of the community advocacy within B C Transit. Um, but we will continue to, uh, to put forth your guys' uh, requests. And, uh, and encourage, uh, not only the province, but also us internally to make sure that, uh, that we're allocating the resources equitably.
Thank you. Uh, Director Elliott.
Thank you. Um, so I also was curious about something you said while talking to Director Gisborne. Um, the, has the idea ever, has any transit ever gone through an area that's without stops? At all, when they're not contributing and then the outcry from the public that says, why don't you stop here? Can lead back to them, um, going to their local thing. Well, we want the bus to stop here. So we need to, you know, this is not cool. Because I find in, in areas, there's, there's different folks who participate in the local government. Then the, the general, the general public's needs aren't not all, we obviously, aren't always recognized by whoever's voted in because the. They're just not as politically active is what I'm trying to say. But buses going by not stopping would definitely get people's attention. And so the idea that we could create a system that ignores that area and just doesn't stop there. And pay for it with the folks who are waiting would have the effect that they would eventually come on board a lot faster than the. The way we're currently doing it. And I'm just wondering, has anybody ever tried that?
Not that I am aware of, uh, Director Elliott. Um, but I understand where you're coming from. Um. One other point I, I did want to make is, um, local governments are also free to, um, make transit partnership agreements with. Um, with other, uh, local governments, with First Nations, with, uh, even with some private, uh, organizations. So I'll use example in Squamish where, um, the, um, Squamish gondola actually contributes to the transit service to offer free service on. Fridays in that, within that community. Um, on highway sixteen, we have, uh, several First Nations communities that contribute because they're, um, because. They contribute to the service, uh, along highway sixteen. Um, and then obviously we put in designated stops within those communities. So there, again, um. To Director Gisborne's, uh, point, there are some creative ways to try to, um, you know, better service those inter-regional connections. Um, yours may be one of those creative ways to do that.
And then my very second, my second, uh, brief point is, and I mentioned it before, B C ferries is currently planning well into the future. And they're trying to figure out how to move people instead of cars. So the idea of transit with trains between ferry terminals to go along with that plan. I think should, the conversation should be happening now as part of their planning process because they're not planning ground transit. Yes, they're struggling to have the vision without that piece.
On the sunshine coast, we have to change our schedule four times, our B C trans schedule four times per year because of the changing B C ferry schedule. So I'm acutely aware of the challenges.
You don't plan together?
Well, and this is, and just so the, my point is, and thank you for, for making that comment. Um, um, the province as well as B C Transit, as well as B C ferries have recognized that there could be more increased collaboration between our agencies. Um, that work is ongoing. Um, we have made some strides there. I appreciate the last time that, uh, that I presented to you, you mentioned the, um, the B C. Uh, ferries engagement that's going on. Um, so I've reached out to them on that front. Um, and of course what we want to do is as we do our service review, we want to make sure that we're engaging them as a key stakeholder as well. So there's that two-way communication, uh, because yes, it is, uh, it is critical and it is important.
And I guess my worry is that there's a future vision that's way better than what they're gonna come up with on their own or that you're gonna come up with. And the idea that that future vision won't happen because we're just not doing a planning process together is frustrating.
Yeah, yeah, the collaboration is, is key for sure. And not just collaboration between the two agencies, but also stakeholder and public input.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further hands, um, Mr. Ringman, I want to thank you very much. Your presentation has been very educational for all of us. And, um, we really appreciate you being here.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, directors, um, we're on reports eight point one. We've had our opportunity to ask questions. Is there a mover for the recommendation before? It's Director Gifford, seconded by Director Brander. Discussion. Seeing no hands. Oh, we almost got there.
It's just a quick question. The operating, uh, agreements come back to us in the fall and there isn't one before us at this point in time. Is the, uh, motion maybe a little bit premature or I'm just curious about that?
Um, Mr. Ringman?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, Director Elliott, this is your annual operating agreement. What I will come back to you in your fall is your transit expansion. Um, so additional costs. So this is your, this is your yearly operating agreement, um, which does need to be signed by June thirty first. So I'd appreciate, I appreciate the motion being made on the floor. Um, and then I will, you will have to, um, see me again in the fall with, uh, the additional transit expansion budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no further hands, all in favor of the recommendation. Any opposed? Very unanimously. Um, we're on to eight point two. Um, we've asked our questions already at the R C M P. Was there a mover? Are you moving the recommendation?
I would like to move it with a third bullet point.
Yes.
Um, the third bullet point, uh. Dog control issues and, uh, education and enforcement.
Dog control, education and enforcement. Yes. Okay, so what you are moving is the motion. Um, three bullets, the third one being dog control, education and enforcement. Is there a secondary for the recommendation? Director Elliott, thank you. Discussion. Reports.
Yeah, um, we have the R C M P. We have the delegations this morning. Uh, I'm happy to support this motion. The reason I added dog control issues is when we get to eight point three, which is the next item on the agenda. Uh, there is, uh, a lot of overlap between what peace officers can do in relation to dog control. And if there is some plans for education in the community, which is what seems to be happening, it might make sense that the R C P also show up and say, oh yes, um, we're the ones you call.
Thank you, um, for the discussion. I'm seeing, oh, Director Planick, aye. There you go.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I appreciate the report, uh, as well, uh, that was written because it really flushes out a lot of the, um. Objectives that we've been talking about. And, um, so in my mind, I'm really obviously supporting the two, um, that are on our report. I don't want to sort of keep adding and adding and adding, but, um, something that, uh, appears to, uh, would appear to help would be this, the advocacy with the, uh. Um, the sheriffs, right? So if we could free up the resources of our officers, I think a lot of those other objectives could be tackled, uh, more efficiently. So I'm not sure if we need to keep adding bullet points, uh, and it might be an opportunity at U B C M to, uh, meet with the appropriate folks on that. C A O maybe have an opinion? Thank you.
No call on him now.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. I think deal with this motion that's on the floor. And then if you want to make a subsequent motion, we can, uh, do that and then deal with that separately. That's, that was the whole intent behind the various options that were supplied.
Okay, thank you, Director Elliott. Um, thank you. Excellent. So the, the motion on the floor right now has the one added bullet to it. I don't think anyone's proposing any others. Um, when it does come to rural areas and the increasing, um, population of folks who are maybe not so agricultural minded. I do think it is kind of important that, uh, the newly rural people who used to be urban do have an education on things like this. And perhaps it's maybe would not be a priority of the R C M P unless we ask, asked for it. And they, we don't have a separate, uh, enforcement agency for, uh, dogs in the rural areas. It is the R C M P. It's not the same as a municipality, although in our municipality, we don't have one either. Um, uh, so I, I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Elliott. Any further comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor. Any opposed? Very unanimously. Okay, so that makes us, uh, that removes us on to eight three. All right, Director Paul.
Uh, I thank you, Director, uh, Chair. I, I just, I think a lot of thought went into the other recommendations in this, uh, this item. And I really appreciate all of them with the exception of, of one. So we've dealt with options one and two. And actually I'd like to, you know, and, and, you know. Short of, uh, taking, uh, Director Linux's thunder, I'd like to actually move all of them except for eight. So, uh, uh, option. Three, these are all advocacy options. And if I get a secondary, I'll speak to it, but advocacy for the sheriff. Advocacy to V C H, the second option, so that the, the committee recommend the board that the R D write to Vancouver Coastal Health. Requesting that they prioritize mental health related emergency room triage to release our C M P back into the community, back to community policing services as soon as possible. Uh, the mental health substance abuse option, uh, option five, option six, safe drugs. Treatment centers and nine, the situation table, advocating, you know, advocating to our partners. So all of them except for. Eight, so that's three, three, four, five, six, seven and nine.
Okay, so you are making an amendment to the recommendation on the floor. That's the, you're moving, okay.
Just vote on it or have we, or do we still have a motion on the table?
It's, well, it, there is no motion on the table as yet. So.
Right, so I'm moving the rec, the, the suggested motions. So I'll, I'll walk through them again a bit more clearly. So option three, so the. We can do them one at a time if the chair prefers, but opt, but to save time, I was thinking of, uh, uh, an ad, a single advocacy motion. That is the combination of option three, which is the staff recommend the board that the R D write to the attorney general advocating for additional sheriff recruitment and hiring. Option four, which is the second motion regarded, regarding, uh, release of R C M P officers as soon as possible regarding, uh. You know, um, when, when there's mental health issues at the hospital, uh, items of the hospital. Five, which is advocacy related to mental health and substance abuse. Six, advocacy, uh, related to safe drug sites. Seven, which is advocacy related to treatment centers and nine, which is advocacy related to situation tables. And these are all the. Uh, motions that are in the, in the report.
Thank you. There's a question from Director Doe.
We are on item eight point two in the agenda or eight point three or where, where is?
We're on eight point two.
Eight point two.
We're on eight point two.
Our C M P objective.
Okay, we're still on eight point two. Okay, that's.
That's a, that's a statement, Chair. Where are we? The Director Fall is reading from a list of options that I don't see under eight point two, R C M P objections. Reading from something else.
Yeah.
Through the chair, he's reading from the report under options.
For our C M P objectives, eight point two.
Correct.
What page is the report, is it?
There's two items. Our C M P. Just so to be clear, sorry, I, I thought, I thought everyone is with me.
First one. Good. No, our C M P objectives. Top line, there, there you go. There's two links on that.
So starting on page eight of the, of the report.
It's a mystery to me. I'm, I'm confused.
Okay, are we all? See, I don't have a page.
Page eight of twenty-six of the staff report, which is page eighty-six of the agenda.
Okay. So, um, that motion has been moved. Could we see it on the screen so that directors understand?
You're not gonna get it on the screen. It has to be created.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, I'm just waiting, um, Enterfall, would you mind sending the motion to me if you could or?
Okay, I know. It's in the report, so it's, uh, okay. Maybe if, since there seems to be some confusion, Chair, would it be better to do these one at a time?
I was going to suggest the same.
Okay, I think it would be better. And then we're all, you know, singing off the form of song sheet, so.
Okay, because, uh, I'm trying to copy if I can from here. So the first one, I'll make the first one. Okay, because I'm trying to copy if I can from here. So the first one, I'll make the first one and get it on the table and I'll try to copy the other ones into the chat. The, the motion is that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district write to the Attorney General of British Columbia. Advocating for additional sheriff recruitment and hiring in Powell River.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on that motion. So that's option three in the package.
That's option three in the package, page eight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no ads, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Very unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, I'll make another motion which is related to option four, the second. Option, sub option, which is that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district write to Vancouver Coastal Health. Requesting that they prioritize mental health related emergency room triage to release the RCMP. Back to community policing services as soon as practically possible to protect and serve the masses versus personalized attention.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion, Director Fall.
Uh, very briefly, the reason I, I prefer this option than the first one is because it relates directly to RCMP advocacy. Whereas the first option, good as it is, it's, it's not um. As directly related to releasing the RCMP back in, but I'm, I'm good with both of them. But uh, I'll put this one forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Elliott, it's been great.
Um, I would move to amend it to remove the words versus personalized attention. I think that those are kind of an infla, like, uh, uh, it's more inflammatory than we need.
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment uh to remove the words personalized attention. Discussion on that amendment. Seeing no hands, all in favor. Any opposed? The amendment is carried.
So that was the words versus personalized attention?
Yeah, that was taken out. Hey, Director Fall, did you want to continue or?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Director Goodborn.
Yeah, um, I. The, in the package, under option four, there, there's three options and this is the last option that we're talking about. Um, this option, the motion that's on the floor is that they're requesting Vancouver Coastal Health that they prioritize mental health. Related emergency room triage. And the reason that, that gives me a pause in my mind is, you know, I've gone through the emergency room more times than I wish to admit. Um, but the way that they do triage is based on a variety of priorities and stipulations. Like you can be sitting there, it's like, oh, I got a headache. Someone comes in covered in blood, they go to the head of the queue. That's how they do their triage. When someone's having a mental health episode, um. Yes, there is, you know, the requirements for Vancouver Coastal Health to be dealing with that. But when there's people with serious injuries coming in or other folks coming in, they have that, that framework, that triage structure. And I don't think that this board or even the regional district as a whole has the expertise to kind of say, well, this one should be above that one. Because the doctors and the medical experts over there, they're the ones that know, you know, which case goes first. And that's why I would actually prefer the other motion, which is uh, get, you know. Advocating that they hire additional doctors and medical staff to deal with the mental health individuals. Um, because to say, oh, no, we want you to put mental health people at the top of the triage. And then that way, you know, you can free up the RCMP and that'll kind of help save up some other resources. I, I think that's kind of interfering with the Vancouver Coastal Health emergency room staff structure more than, than we should. And I would actually advocate very strongly that they hire the appropriate staff so that the RCMP can drop off the individuals and say, okay. You've got this, you've got your security team, you got your detail, it is now your responsibility rather than saying, oh. You know, tell the sick kid in the hallway, he's gonna have to wait because we gotta deal with someone who's having a, a mental health episode. And I think our CIO. I have a comment on that, so.
Yes, he does. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair, the intent of prioritizing it doesn't mean it goes to the top. Because we know if there's somebody that's bleeding out, they're getting the attention. This is just to put the mental health. Uh, type of uh emergencies closer to the top are always on their radar. Versus getting potentially demoted to the bottom of the bin. Because the RCMP cannot leave that individual until that individual has been assessed and admitted. And that's what this is all about, getting them assessed and admitted as quickly as possible, not automatically going to the top of the, the ladder.
Yeah, I, I actually agree with the CEO on that one. However, it doesn't mean they go to the top of the ladder, but they are going higher up on the ladder than, than perhaps they should be. So, yeah, I think it's a lack of resources at Vancouver Coastal Health and I don't think that they should be moved really. I don't, no, they shouldn't be at the top of the ladder, but I don't think they should even be moved up the ladder because someone else might be halfway up and. And uh, I, yeah, I think it's Vancouver Coastal Health needs to step up their game in their staffing. But I, I, I believe Director Lennox might have some more insight due to his uh past work experience, so.
I have Director Elliott first and Director Lennox.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So, um. One of the good news stories from, from Vancouver Coastal Health and our hospital is, is that they've been doing some renovations. And one of the things they've renovated is for a quiet um, private space to um, talk to people. Who uh might need some privacy for mental health purposes. So they didn't have that facility before. They didn't have an appropriate space for some of that, that, that made it super challenging. Um. So they're, they're in, improving their space and ability to handle mental health within our emergency room, which will help. Um, the, the, I'm in favor of the motion because it isn't just a matter of hiring more staff. But rather training existing staff to understand um. How a mental health crisis might be, get it fit within priorities. Um, and. That isn't, hasn't always been done. People look at your, I, I'm an ambulance attendant. You got all of your medical numbers, your, your breasts, your alertness, your, whether you're bleeding out, all of those other things. That you triage for immediate threats to life. Um. The mental health aspects are not necessarily. Uh, inquired about or handled within that triage appropriately. Because really bad decision making is a threat to life, but it isn't, isn't properly put into the triage system. And so they tend to not be prioritized where they should be. And so I think this is the exact right.
Thank you, Director Elliott. Director Lennox.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. And yes, uh, Director Gibbsborn, uh, I've spent several years working in this environment and experiencing some of these delays. And watching RCMP resources uh be severely delayed to be able to respond on our streets. Although I, 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 I understand Director Gibbsborn's intent of his amendment, I think that the original motion. Uh, would suffice because that allows, they're both towards VCH and that would allow VCH to. Understand what we're getting at, but uh, as, as Director Elliott spoke to, there's different um. Actions that can or cannot be taken within the organization and they're not just the psychiatrist or the doctor. Um, uh, there's various factors. So I think the original motion uh will identify what we're, what we're asking for. And um, allow them to be flexible to get it done. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Lennox. Um, I am not seeing any further hands. Could we, uh, CIO, please just get clarity on what? Is it, what we are voting on right now? There is an amended?
Uh, there's no amendment title.
Okay, just the last three words, yeah, or four words rather. Okay.
The last one.
The last one.
Minus the last three letter, words.
Good, Director Lennox said I had an amendment.
Not seeing any further hand, so all in favor of that motion. Any opposed? Very unanimous. Okay, Director Fall, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to move the option five, which is that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district write to local agencies. Requesting that they hire additional staff to adequately case manage mental health and or substance abuse clients.
Okay, seconded by Director Goodborn. Discussion. Director Elliott?
I think um, we would need to specify what those local agencies are. This is a little bit general for. It, it'll be difficult for staff to know exactly how to implement this motion.
CIO.
Through the chair. I think I can handle it. I attended the uh workshop on uh the situation table. And I think I'll just liaise with them to find out what the agencies are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Gibbsborn.
Uh, yeah, question for our CIO, uh, who has got some experience in this. Uh, if we're reaching out to local agencies and requesting that they hire additional staff. Um, Vancouver Coastal Health, that's one thing, but if they're nonprofits, is that gonna turn around and they're gonna come and ask us for grant money or, or funding? Because if they say, hey, if you want us to hire more staff. Please hand over some cash. I'm just kind of wondering, is, is this motion going to result in uh greater asks for, for funding this regional district?
CIO.
Sure, it's kind of a rhetorical question. I can predict the future.
Director Doe.
Yeah, I don't know what to say. I, I don't think that there is a single agency in the region. That is not hiring people because they don't think the regional district would like them to. You know, really, we're going to write to all of the, all of the organizations trying to, trying to cover. Mental health and addiction issues and say, we think you should hire more staff. And that that is going to cause a dis, a decision for them to realize that they should have more staff and go out and decide to hire. When I listen to people talking, they tell me they're trying to hire staff, but either they can't find the properly trained people. Or they don't have enough money. Not because they wouldn't like to hire more staff or they don't need one. I'm not sure that a letter from us simply asking to hire more people is going to, is gonna have the result we want.
That's a good point. And I'm wondering, Director Fall, would you consider an amendment to change the words right to, to communicate with?
Uh, yes.
Okay, if that will accomplish the. I will move that as an amendment. Okay, okay, Director Gibbsborn, second. We're talking on the amendment now. To change the words right to, to communicate with. So it would be that the regional district communicate with local agencies. And that can be through um, our CIO's work through um, the situation table or whatever that looks like. It doesn't prescribe what that communication would be on the amendment, Director Elliott.
I kind of like the amendment because it allows us to come back with specific motions if the CIO wants to bring that to us through his communications. Um, one of the points I was gonna make was um. In my personal experience, when my, when I was put on a waiting list when my child needed mental health support, it took him twelve months while he was in crises. And that is simply the Ministry of Small, it's a provincial agency that keeps care of child and youth mental health. And they do not have the staff or the capacity to deal with crises. They tell you, if you have a crisis, you go to the hospital. If you go to the hospital, the hospital will tell you. We don't have anybody specialized in child and youth mental health here at our hospital. We can do nothing for you other than, you know. Hang on to your child and send them home. You, that you have to refer through this twelve month process to get help for your child. So, um.
That's a catch twenty-two situation.
There is no emergency crises intervention for mental health. Uh, available at the time when I, when, when I was seeking it. And so it's definitely a lack of resources with agencies that are needing to be stopping up to handle that.
Okay, so our conversation is about the amendment. Um, to the motion change right to to communicate with. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no hands, all in favor of the amendment? Okay, any opposed? Carry. So main motion as amended, Director Gibbsborn.
Yeah, I concur with Director Doe's points on. When you ask organizations about staffing, it's either they can't find the staff or they don't have enough money. And quite often, if you can't find the staff, you need to pay more in order to get the staff. And that's the concern I have with uh this motion. I, I, I think it is okay though. But I think the issue around mental health is really the provincial government dropping the ball. They're not providing the funding, they're not taking this seriously. And I'm concerned that when the regional district says, hey, can you guys get more staff? The province loves that because they're not downloading, they're going, oh, you're voluntarily taking on more provincial government responsibility. And to Director Elliott's point, yes, there's multiple provincial agencies. They're not allocating sufficient resources to deal with these issues. And as a result, they, they want local government to take on the funding and take on the responsibility because. I'm not gonna get into provincial. My blood pressure is good where it is.
Provincial agencies to be part of the people we were gonna communicate with.
Director Paul is next on the speakers list.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be very brief. I think, I, I like the amendment as amended, the, the motion as amended. And I think what it might help with, rather than, you know. Uh, ask, you know, kind of redirecting agencies back to us to ask for funding. It might help those agencies. Seek funding from the proper source, which is the province. They'll, they'll have backing from the Q, your Q R D and especially if the communication has a couple rounds. And those agencies may say, hey, we're providing these services that the uh, that the province should be providing. And maybe that'll help them get funding from the province.
Hey, thank you, Director Fall. Um, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Very unanimous.
You were voting on the amendment.
No, we voted on the amendment already. Oh, the main motion as amended. Are you opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, so, all right, Director Fall.
Okay, thank you. So uh, option six, I'd like to move that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district inquire. With local agencies as to their practices and procedures and handling and distributing safe drugs. And if there is any reason to be concerned or alarmed that safe drugs may be being sold on the street. And if practices and procedures maybe, may need to be amended.
Okay, so that motion is to inquire with local agencies um regarding all of the, the following. Is there a second or for that motion? I, okay, Director Gibbsborn has seconded it. Um, who would like to speak to this? Director Fall.
I'll speak very briefly, which this could dovetail with the preceding one, especially as amended with communication during that communication. This is a, a kind of inquiry to, to just find out what's going on with, with this issue.
Thank you, Director Doe.
What, what is the intention to do after we've inquired and made decisions?
Um, Director Fall.
Uh, well, so this, this. The basically uh, safe drugs, uh, you know, I guess if we. We can't predict the future to know what they're doing. And if we find out that there are some role that we might do either to. Uh, with some policy or maybe with liaison with the RCMP, that there may be some information that might help us.
Great, Director Elliott.
I'm not in favor of the motion. Um, we currently have a community action team where all of the players sit at the table. And we can ask these questions at any time. Um, staff from the regional district sit there as well as some of the political folks. Um, the safe supply in, in our region is handled through various clinics by prescription. And folks having to show up directly to receive their, their safe supply. Um, there isn't um. A lot of distribution of what's happening in some of the other areas where people can take it home and that sort of thing. Um, the only other types that you would talk about would be your regular prescriptions, which are handled through the legislation for prescriptions. And I don't, I think this motion is an ill-informed sort of approach to stuff we're already dealing with. And if anybody wants to talk a little bit more about, to our experts about these sort of things, you can connect with them through the cat and set up. Individual conversations with them. Um, I think that the majority of the fear around this is just that ill-informed fear. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Director Gibbsborn.
Yeah, I've kind of been swayed by the other director's points. Um, greater thought on the matter makes me think. If there's drugs being sold on the street, whether their sources safe supplier or not, that's an RCMP issue. And the first part of the motion, which is, you know, to inquire with local agencies. Uh, if we do that, I think that's gonna use up some of their staff time. And as we, I think are all aware, they're all limited in their staff resources. And, you know, if we were the RCMP or we had some more abilities in relation to dealing with, you know, the illicit drugs and, and drugs being sold on the street. Maybe I'd be in favor, but uh, I think this might just create a bunch of work for folks that are already strained. And with the information that we get, I don't think. With the information that we get, I don't think there's really much we can do about it. Uh, so I'm actually not in favor of the motion.
Thank you, Director Gifford. Is there further discussion on this motion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion does not carry.
No, I, I've got two more. It's option seven, so I'd like to move that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district write to the. Premier of British Columbia, impor- employing the provincial government to invest in treatment options. In the Cethet region so residents can feel safe and comfortable, and so the vulnerable can access. Greatly needed treatment options to have better physical and mental health and potentially recover, and first and foremost to stay alive.
Okay, so a motion to invest in, in treatment options calling on the province. Is there a second or for that motion? Director Lennox, thank you. Discussion. Director Elliott.
Um, I do think it's good to have treatment options and the. Province is definitely should be investing in that and. Um. I'm just wondering at this particular um, motion. In that um, maybe it would be more appropriate for us to meet at U B C M or maybe write a letter that is um. Intended to uh, uh, introduce the subject at U B C M. Um. I guess I wanted to discuss the various options. And wondering if maybe. The, some of the words in the motion were a little loaded emotionally and could be. Succinct, so I, I wasn't a big fan of how this was worded, but.
Okay, thank you, and comments have been registered. C A O.
I think you'll note that, through the chair, I think you'll note that the province has these intentions. And that's what they're. Announcing or advertising. This would just be to follow up and hopefully keep their. Feet to the fire and actually do it and bring it to our particular region because I don't think anybody can say that we've got.
Get her hand up. On us, please.
Well, I, I don't think that we can say beyond a shadow of doubt that we've got sufficient resources past what we, you know. Do with the initial, uh, nor.
Yeah, you're a good one, and then Director Brander.
Yeah, I'm reading the motion. That was worded, employing the provincial government to invest in treatment option in the Cethet region. If I was the province, I'd respond with, well, we already are investing in treatment options, um, like the province. Are they investing enough? No. Should they be investing more? Yes, because there are some treatment options in the community that do receive provincial funding. Are they adequate? I don't believe so. The other part that I would kind of almost want to insert is. To insert the word effective treatment options, because one of the issues with the province is they go, well, we're providing treatment. And there's, there's different levels of what is effective and what isn't effective. If it, if, is it just a, okay, we're gonna provide you with a safe supply. So that way you don't die versus, okay, we need to give you counseling and supportive to get you off the drugs. Um, like, that's a different option, and as we know with the province, very little money, and they wanna try and usually do things for the most cost-effective. Way possible for them, but that doesn't result in a long-term solution to these, to these problems so that individuals can rebuild their lives. So. I do kind of have a bit of an issue with the resolution because. This motion, if it goes off to the province, they might just turn around and go like, okay, we'll provide some more safe injection sites. And I don't think that's what we need in the community, um, because of course. The province will interpret it their own way, if unless we're specific. Um.
Through the, through the chair. I believe Director Gifford has the definitions of the various stages or the pillars mixed up. What you're referring to is. Uh, reduction in harm, no harm.
It's not treatment.
It's not treatment. So this is the next stage that is definitely missing in our community to the abundance for the, to the degree that we require.
Thank you, Director Brander's next.
Just a, a quick one, um. Are some of these uh, motions getting into issues that should be dealt with with the Regional Hospital District instead of the?
C A O.
No, not at this point in time because we're dealing with what the R C M P officer is.
Okay.
Read, brought to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the current recommendation. I'm not seeing any hands, so all in favor? Sorry, can I get that? One, two, three, four? Any opposed? One, two. So the motion is carried. Okay. Um, Director Paul.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I'd like to move, uh. Lastly, the option nine, and I'll combine it so that the committee recommends to the board that the regional district writes to local agencies. Encouraging their participation and playing an active role in the newly forming Situation Table and. Uh, that the board directs staff to attend the Situation Table during the formative. Phase to gain more knowledge and greater insight into the purpose and direction the initiative finally takes.
Okay, is there a second or, Director Brander? Thank you, discussion. Director Doubt.
I'm not sure how, how much good it's gonna do now that the national meeting has already gone by. Or that, but then, you know, and. C A O attended, I was there, there was other directors of the regional district that were there. I hope the Situation Table succeeds, but. Writing a letter, I guess, would be interesting. I'm not sure how much, how much difference it would make at the present time.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I mean, I'm, I'm more in favor of the second part of that. Um. Because I don't see any point also to writing the letter, but we have the motion on the table, further discussion. Director Elliott.
Um, I think that agencies that. You, that may not have made it to the initial meeting could still join at this point. It's still very much in its formative phase. And encouraging local agencies that we think could help out with the Situation Table to be there would be a good thing, so.
Thank you, Director Elliott, for the discussion. Seeing no hands, and we'll vote on this recommendation, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay. Is that, that concludes your recommendations? Yep, Director Brander.
Uh, just, and we didn't address option two in this report. And I don't, I was just curious if that was because something very similar is coming up in item eight point three, or. If we should be looking at this one at this point. We looked at one and then we skipped past it to three.
Hey, C A O.
Through the chair, I believe Director Fall believed that Director Gifford's addition of bullet number three on the original motion sufficed.
That's on the list of things. Director Brander?
I see that as very different items. The first one was an objective given to the R C M P, whereas this one is. That the board directs staff to come back to a future meeting with information, so basically a report on the concept of, uh, creating a service.
C A O.
Through the chair, uh. It would be up to the desire of the board as to whether or not option two in that particular is. Director Brander's referring to would be, uh. Advantageous or wanting to move forward on the, the motion would be in order.
So I'll, I'll make that motion, um. Option, which is option two, direct staff to investigate creating new services. It says for noise nuisance and dangerous dogs. At this point, I think I'm just ready to move the. The third one that's written there, which is, and I'll read it, that the committee recommends to the board that the board directs staff to come back. To a future meeting with information regarding options available under Division Five dash Regulation of Animals of the Local Government Act.
Okay, so that is the third thing that you're moving. Okay, the second or for that motion? Oh, second, uh, Director. Fall. Discussion. Director Brander.
Uh, we've just heard quite a few incidents, uh, people reporting to us about, uh, issues with dangerous dogs. We've had the R C M P come in and say that their hands are largely tied, there are no bylaws. I think it makes sense to at least. Investigate it. I'm not saying we have to go any further than that, but at least it tells us what that actually entails.
And I see that also being different from, um, the list of stuff going to the police. Okay, I've got Director Gifford and Director Elliott.
Yeah, um. I think it'd be great to get a report from staff on. What to do about dangerous dogs and animal control, uh, in the electoral areas. The good news. Is item eight point three has that. Which is the next item on our agenda, so I don't see a need to pass this motion because. The item that we're looking for is the next item on the agenda.
Okay, um, got Director Elliott, then Director Brander.
Um, yeah, I would be fine to postpone this, uh, motion till the end of the next discussion, eight point three, because it sounds like we're talking about the same. Or similar things. Um, I do think that the R C M P can use, uh, bylaws passed by local government as enforcement tools and. What the constable was saying earlier was that, um, the amount of tools that they have are basically the courts and the courtship office take a long time and. Um, don't give them much they can do in responding to a lot of these complaints, and it's. Onerous for them to go to court to get a dog declared dangerous so that they can do something about it. And some bylaws with fines and things that they could happily do immediately would definitely help them as far as having tools to address. The calls that they're going to receive. Um, but. I think that it would be wise to postpone the motion to include the conversation under eight point three if that's a little bit different.
Okay, we'll hold that thought. I have Director Brander next.
I'm, thank you, Chair. I'm quite happy to wait until the next one. Just, it seems like we were being repetitive on eight point two and eight point three. I just wanted to make sure that was addressed, so.
Okay, so with the agreement of the group, we will hold that, um. Table recommendations, what do we do?
I'll move, I'll move that we table it until.
Postpone that until after we've dealt with.
Table till eight point three.
Okay, all right, the second or for that? Yeah, all in favor? Take care. So we will move on to eight point three, and there is a recommendation in the report, and there is a report. So what would you like to do?
I'll move the recommendation that's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much, seconded by. Uh, Director Lennox, thank you. Discussion. Director Gifford.
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for this report. It really helps, uh, outline. Essentially all the legislation that we run into in the rural areas in relation to dogs. Um, because it's not just one piece of legislation. You've got the Community Charter, you've got the Local Government Act. You've got the Livestock Act, and. The staff have really put together a really good comprehensive six-page report here. And I think that this report could actually even be sent to the R C M P. So that they can have some clear understanding of what the legislation is that empowers them, because they're used to dealing with the criminal code. But I'm gonna read specifically from this. Staff report, which is section forty-nine of the Community Charter, which is the special powers in relations to dangerous dogs. And that allows local governments to have bylaws and bylaw enforcement officers and all that kind of stuff. However, section three twenty-two of the Local Government Act says. Whether or not this division applies to the regional district under section three seventeen, which is the authority requires animal control service. A peace officer may exercise authority under section forty-nine of the Community Charter within the boundaries of the regional district. What that is saying in, in my head, and I'm not a lawyer, is saying. Whether we have a bylaw or not. The peace officers, the R C M P, have the authority of the jurisdiction to do. Whatever it is the regional district would want to take on. So. I think this is a great information tool, a great education tool, and it makes me think about. The conversation that always comes up around downloading from senior level governments, and I go, okay. I don't like being downloaded on, but if we start taking on these bylaws, we are voluntarily taking on downloading. The R C M P has jurisdiction, but though, of course, they're used to dealing with criminal code and, you know, all these other issues. And I think if we send this staff report, uh, over to the R C M P, it can help them, uh, with their education, and I think it can also help. Uh, just with members of the community to know that whether or not the regional district has animal control bylaws. Doesn't negate the responsibility and the law that already exists that says. We don't need a bylaw enforcement officer. The R C M P can go and do it. And as a result, I'm very happy for the staff report, um, because it can be used as an information tool. Um, so I'm happy with the motion, and I'm gonna ask our C A O, would it be appropriate for a subsequent motion? To forward the staff report to the R C M P, or would that, would that just be done without a, a motion?
There you go.
Through the chair, I, I would suggest dealing with the, uh, motion on the floor, then consider that one afterwards.
Really?
Um. Yeah, it seems pretty clear in the legislation that the police don't actually need to go to the court to make these determinations. It says they can do it themselves. And maybe they don't know that. Uh, or maybe there's some other thing we are unaware of that they are subject to, and so either. Either. Education is required one way or the other, right? And so it would be good to perhaps have more clarity on. Wh- where the education is required in order to, to, to sync this up a little bit. But, uh, I'm in, I'm in favor of the motion, obviously, when I accept the report. Um. Anyway, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the discussion, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will vote on this recommendation, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Um, now, we're on, back to eight point two, which has been referred to, um. After eight point three, and we're looking at option two. So, pleasure, pleasure, directors. We're back to the motion that was, um, believe Director Brander you had made regarding. Uh, directing staff to come back to a future meeting with information regarding options available. Um. Director Doubt.
Yeah, so we've just. Dealt with eight point three, which is a decision to either accept the report of staff. And file it, or ask staff to create a, an animal control bylaw report. And in eight point three, staff says. You know, one of the options for that, the other option that the only chose. Would be to ask staff to create a report on a bylaw that would include the hiring of bylaw, bylaw control officers. And securing an impoundment site, which all would involve, I can think, considerable. Expense, and I, while I've been sitting at around this table, I haven't heard a lot of interest from the. Your electoral area directors, particularly in establishing services like an animal control bylaw service, so. I just want to point out, if you're gonna vote in favor of doing this option two study. Uh, it will include costs, it will include the hiring of staff, and will include. Uh, and the impoundment site, et cetera, so frankly, I think the. First, the decision that was already made in eight point three to accept a report that's written by staff is a good one.
Okay, thank you, and, but we're now back to eight point two, so, um. It seems to me that the recommendation, putting myself on the speakers list, um. It seems to me that a lot of the options are already included in the report. So, um, I might ask the C A O, is there further information that this committee would benefit from? Um, regarding what we can do, um, that isn't contained in the report?
Well, through the chair, I can only suspect that things would be fleshed out, like Director Doubt has suggested. That there would be costs, uh, then known to the board. Um, perhaps the difficulty in. Doing such a thing, uh, within the. The A's. Um. But it would just, you know, in essence, give the board more. Information to make, uh, more informed decisions, uh. But if the will of the board is to stick with what is in eight point three. Then I would suggest that they just vote down this particular one.
Okay, thank you for that advice. Director Elliott.
Thank you, um. Creation of bylaws and enforcement of bylaws are two different things. You can create bylaws that would give you, um, additional tools to deal with a range of nuisance things. Which the legislation doesn't currently do. It's, it's very, well, if something's a bad enough problem, you get rid of the dog. There's no. Um. There's no intermediary, uh, options or tools, so you can't give a dog owner a fine for. Letting their dog run around and it's being a nuisance, but it's not dangerous, or, you know, they're not adequately dealing with. Some other aspect of caring for their dog. There's no, there's no tools in the Community Charter or any of the. There's no, there's no tools in the community charter or any of the legislation to deal with that. That would be the local governments to create a bylaw for those kinds of things. Enforcement of those bylaws can be done by the local government through bylaw officers, or it can also be done by the local police. It does not necessarily require additional staff to enforce the bylaws. So um I think a report to talk about having bylaws and whether it would require a service or any funding to enforce or or the various different levels of how you approach that would be useful and more specific than the generalities we have here. And I I think that um if if catch and detain is an issue, you would need to address that, right? So if you're going to create a bylaw that says you can detain an animal and you have to pay to get it back, you pay your fines or what have you and you get your warning that way, then you need to have a place to do that. So then, do you work with the local SPCA? Do you have your own? You know, those are all ways to figure that out. Um, and there's options and we don't know what all the options are or not. So I think a report would be helpful.
Great. Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, although I don't want to create more work and I I understand the issue, I think. And I think I understand how most of the people in my area feel about uh these services. Um, uh, you know, details matter to folks and being able to have those discussions and have some facts to say, well, this is actually the implications of A, creating a bylaw and B, enforcement of of whichever kind um is helpful in those discussions so that people have context and understand what their request actually is going to cost. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, Director, uh, Gibson.
Thank you, Chair. Um. Yeah, one of the questions that, of course, I would be asked if we create a bylaw would say, what's the point of having a bylaw if you don't enforce it? And if someone has a dog wandering around and it's in violation of the bylaw, the issue then becomes, well, how do you enforce that? Who enforces it? As it currently stands, if a dog is wandering around and someone goes and says like, whose dog is this? It's just wandering around. You put a leash on it. You can take it to the SPCA. There's an animal shelter there. That's not impounding. That's not the enforcement branch of a of a local government bylaw. That is if a member of the public just says, hey, I see a dog wandering around. I think where we put our resources and where we put our money and staff time really matters. Our staff have come back with a good report. We've already got it. I think what is needed now is public education on what the rules currently are. I we're hearing from a delegation this morning that they're they're working on that. And I'd love for our organization, our regional district, to support that education efforts. I think we should then look at it next year and review, hey, how did that education work? Does the public know what's actually going on in relation to dogs in rural areas? And I'll speak to a very personal experience. Out in the valley, a couple of years ago, new family moves out, they let their dog wander. They're 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 used to go, well, it's just a big forest area. Let the dog wander. And I talked to the property owner and I said, look, or the dog owner, and I said, look, um, there's a lot of farmers in this area and under the Livestock Act, as is in the staff report that we just dealt with, if your dog is chasing livestock, the farmer has a right to put it down. And the property owner or the dog owner went, oh, my God, I had no idea. And I said, look, I I won't do it because my animals are fine, but there are farmers that have that right. The next day and every day after that, I never saw that dog wandering again. They had a proper fence. They had the property owner, the dog owner said, I recognize the liability that they have because if a dog goes over and attacks livestock, not only can the farmer put the dog down, they can also go back to the dog owner and say, you're liable for the loss of my livestock. So I'm actually not in favor of the motion to ask for more staff reports and more information on this issue when I think we've got good information. And I think the next step now is public education, public awareness. And next year, if it's not working, then sure, let's let's revisit it. But let's get that public education factor going because there's folks out there that don't understand that whether we have a bylaw or not, the RCMP has authority. And on top of that, while the RCMP says, hey, if there is an issue, we'll have to go through the courts, our bylaw enforcement officers would most likely have to do the same because we're following under the same legislation that says, hey, you've got a dangerous dog and we're going to apply for it to be destroyed. The bylaw officer can't just come out and kill someone's dog. They have to actually apply to the court and say, hey, this is the evidence and this is why we believe this dog should be destroyed and therefore then follows through that process. So I believe it would be the same process, whether it's RCMP or our enforcement officers. And so I'm actually not in favor of this motion. I think we've got good information. And if we need any more information and we want to spend more staff time and staff resources, we can do it after we see the results of the public educations.
Okay, so I would like to, unless, okay, there is one more speaker, Director Lennox.
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Just quickly, uh, just for clarity here and for me, um, this option actually includes dogs, but it also includes noise and nuisance. So I think it's a little bit of a bigger issue. And I know that um there are those types of complaints that come through too for noise and other types of nuisance. So I just want, I thought we should consider that it's not just dogs.
Thank you. Uh, CIO?
Could we ask the mover to clarify what his motion was? Just so that Director Lennox is clear.
Yeah, if that's the last paragraph or the last two paragraphs.
Uh, initially, I moved it uh just to be dogs. I would have no problem with it being expanded to noise and nuisance. As I I would assume that the it actually probably wouldn't uh increase the workload of the staff to add that. But yeah, you're right. Initially, it was just for the dogs.
Okay, so it's a third paragraph um regarding options for regulation animals. So that's what's on the table right now. Director Gisborne.
Can we get the motion up on the screen? Because I think there's some confusion. Is it, I I, my understanding is it's only the dogs issue that we're talking about? Um, the noise and nuisance is a.
Yeah, Division five. It is only the dogs issue that is the subject of the motion.
Okay.
And so the motion was that the committee recommends to the board that the board directs staff to come back to a future meeting with information regarding options available under Division Five Regulation of Animals of the Local Government Act. That is the recommendation that is before us. I'm not seeing any further hands. Is there anyone I'm not seeing? Okay, let's go, Director Paul.
I'll just be brief and let's add my two bits to this. I'm I'm a little torn, but I think I will support it. And I think, you know, I I don't want to add more staff work. On the other hand, this came forward in our uh the preceding report, item eight point two, as a recommendation. So I assume the staff resources are there. We have had a number of people write to us about dogs and and delegate to us about dogs and they they are looking to us to do something. I'm not, you know, I don't think, you know, I I'm not convinced that a a a full-blown service would would help given the scale of the problem because the report also says, you know, nineteen uh inquiries about dogs over five years. That's not a lot. But I think having a report would help not just with with our our deliberations, but it would help with the public understanding. And a lot of the work's been done in the report, as Director Gisborne has said, but it would bring it together and bring out its options. And I think it would flesh out the, you know, the difference between having a bylaw, enforcing the bylaw, whether that, you know, whether having a bylaw that's not enforced, that's, would that be useful for the RCMP? Would we be then taking on an obligation? And I hope that it would also include options related to continuing with an education and, you know, this kind of proactive educational approach in it too. So I think it will be a a useful tool both for us, but I think for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Paul. Um, I'd like to move on. Have you got new information, Director?
Second kick of the can, right?
Okay, we need to have a bio break pretty soon.
Yeah, but I'm I'm just thinking too. Um, I'm just thinking back to when we had our consultant, Alice Sebring, talk to us about how we go around directing staff and dealing with these kind of issues. We already dealt with a staff report on this issue. And as Mr. Sebring had said, if it doesn't have the information that we wanted or we want more information, then we should have referred the last motion back to staff. That's if we weren't happy with the report that we got and we wanted more information, we referred back to staff. But we didn't do that. We accepted it, we filed it and we moved on. And now we're coming back and saying, well, actually, no, we want more information. And I'm just going that that's kind of contrary to what our recent training was by the consultant that we brought in. If we get a staff report, we want more info, refer it back to staff, but we didn't do that. So.
Thank you, Director.
Director Elliot, I just want to call the question.
Okay, the question has been called.
Is it seconded?
Motion to move the previous question, isn't that the wording? Okay, um, is that debatable?
No.
Available.
It has to be seconded.
Okay, so is there a second for moving the previous question? Director Brander, thank you. All in favor? Carry it. All right, the motion before us, we will now vote. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Unopposed? Okay, um. I suggest that we take about a ten-minute bio break if that's in agreement and we want to get some lunch to bring it back to the table. So what time is it now?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve forty-nine, so we will come back at one o'clock.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we're back. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole. Thank you for your questions.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back to Committee of the Whole and thank you for your questions. And we're now on item eight point four, Spring Bay Road.
If I can move the full recommendation?
Thank you Director Paul, seconded by Director Brander. Discussion? Director Paul?
Uh, thank you Chair, and I'm really happy to see this back. I think it will be a very, uh, loved park if it gets, uh, if we have support here. I don't think it'll be an expensive park. It would be, you know, it's a, as a trail, it'll be very low maintenance. The, the other regional park on Laskidi Island is very low maintenance and, uh, costs very little, in fact, close to zero. Uh, I do have one question, um, for, uh, Mr. Devro if he's, if he's available. And that, that relates to the, you know, the, the, I guess, the suggestion or the alternative of going to the community for a, a name change, or for an alternate name, I should say. And the question is, how hard would it be to change the name in the future if, if that would be needed if the community feels that this isn't an appropriate name?
Good. Mr. Devro?
Uh, through the chair if I may. Um, not heard. Uh, it's been done in the past. Uh, there would be cost with signage and mapping and changes of, uh, uh, different notices to staff or whatever, but it's not, uh, not a huge, uh, cost. Um, I did, uh, do some background into the name and asked around a little bit, uh, and asked what the local people in that neighborhood call it. And they call it Spring Bay Park. Um, and I was worried about, uh, um, uh, you know, asking for names. As you know, you get, uh, Bodie McBoatface or something, that kind of thing. So, anyway.
Well, thank you very much, and I, I, I concur. I mean, everyone on Laskidi, when they say where you're going, they go to Spring Bay, and there's a, there is a Ministry of Transportation public access to the, the more beachy beach part of it, and this is a bit, you know, only several hundred meters further, so I think people refer to it that way. I don't think there will be, I don't expect there will be any contention. Boot Point Regional Park is boot, is, that's Boot Point, so it's a geographic feature. And I think this, uh, will be a great addition to our regional park system. Thank you very much.
Thank you Director Paul. Director Lee?
Uh, thank you Chair. So I have some questions, um, about the, uh, so is it a, is there cost affiliated to applying for a license of occupation and designating, um, places as parks? Are there things we need to do that are gonna cost us money in that regard, or, or staff time, or like, there doesn't seem to be a lot of information on what that entails. Mr. Devro?
Through the chair, uh, the Ministry of Transportation offers, uh, these licenses of occupation free of charge. There is no, uh, cost to the regional district other than staff time to do the application.
Any further discussion? Director Doe?
Yeah, and I think I think there there will be minimal costs associated with the park. I know we're talking about, uh, costs for maintaining Boot Point Park, picking up garbage and doing things like that and taking care of signs, so. There will be some minimal costs going ahead, and I think we need to give a guard, but they won't be zero, but there will be some kind of cost associated with having another regional park to maintain.
Thank you Director Doe. Director Gisborne?
Yeah. Um, I'm just thinking about some of our existing regional parks, and I don't know like the terms and conditions of the license of occupation, and hopefully staff can help me on this. We have a variety of regional parks where nonprofits like to get involved and, you know, put in infrastructure or do activities. Um, would the license of occupation allow the regional district to authorize nonprofits to, to use these parks and do infrastructure stuff? Or would that require a subsequent, like, change to the license of occupation? As, I guess it's a question more for, uh, either to our CIO or through the chair to Mr. Devro.
Mr. Devro?
So, uh, s- sorry, uh, uh, Chair, what was the question again?
Uh, the license of occupation and whether or not it authorizes, uh, nonprofits or user groups in the future to, you know, be putting in infrastructure or things like that, as has occurred in some of other, in some of our other regional parks. Or would that require a different license of occupation to be changed in the future?
You're thinking of Rotary Gazebo, except?
Yeah, like either the Rotary Gazebo or the Exhibition Park in Paradise Valley, and I'm just, I'm just wondering whether or not this license of occupation would allow that, or whether it would have to, you know, because of course every time you do one of these things that uses staff time and that comes with costs, so I'm just no one, no one's knocking at the door yet, but maybe one day.
Mr. Devro?
S- sorry, yes Chair, I, I kind of missed that. Um, the license of occupation, um, for this is for a nature park. There are no improvements. So, under this license, there would be no improvements allowed except for signage to identify it as the park. So there's no buildings permitted, there's no, uh, no trees falling that aren't danger trees, those kind of things. Um, and it's different, this is different than, uh, the parks where we own or the parks like, uh, Craig Park and, uh, Paradise Exhibition Park, which, which are are licenses for park purposes. So they're different, and they have management plans showing all of the improvements on the land and what we're doing, and if we ever want to do different things there, we have to change the ma- management plan for those ones. So I hope that understands, and, and if I may clarify one point to, to Director Elliott's, uh, question, I forgot, there is a two hundred and fifty dollar uh, processing fee for the license of occupation. So why there are, are, uh, I, I said there was no cost, there, just staff time, I was incorrect there, that there is a two hundred and fifty dollar, uh, processing fee, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Devro. Further discussion, Director Lennox?
Oh, there we go. Uh, thanks Chair. Uh, maybe just a quick question for Director Fall. I mean, to the point of keeping it, uh, the intent is for a nature park with no improvement is my understanding, and I would ask Director Fall of, um, his assessment of the community sentiment on that. A thumbs up is probably sufficient.
Well, I'll, I'll speak a moment if one, if one recognizes if, uh,
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I'd actually go further than say that the, that the sentiment would be that the community would want a nature park, to say that that's, that's all the community would want. The community would be very averse to infrastructure, the, and development or any other uh, any other developments. There is a trail. If you look on the, uh, the original, uh, letter from Laskidi Island Nature Conservancy, which is on page one thirty-two of our agenda, um, and it shows the size, it's kind of an unusual piece of property, because it is a, it is a kind of road allowance or beach access from a subdivision that happened in the seventies, but it's kind of consolidated, so it's two point two hectares, five acres, so it's fairly big. Not huge, but, you know, for, for our ministry road allowance, so it's a, it's intact forest facing, uh, some beautiful islands, and, and the community would want it to be exactly the way it is. I mean, they, they would want it to know that it would be just left alone. There's a trail, and it's not likely, of course, Modi would maybe could use it in the future for a road. That doesn't, the license of occupation doesn't stop any other uses, they're non-exclusive, but it doesn't really go anywhere. There's a, there's a property on the other side and they have another access, and they wouldn't want to go through there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no guarantees, of course, but that's the community, to answer your question more directly, the community would only want it to be this way, and they will, they'll be happy to have it like this.
Thanks for the clarity in that, and I, I think it's very exciting for your, uh, for the island, uh, for the, for the minimal cost, uh, to have something like that. That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you Director Lennox, and I certainly agree that it's, um, whenever we have the opportunity to, um, save parkland, um, or at least save for the future generation, um, it's important that we do that. My two bits. Director Elliott?
Thank you. I know this is my second time, but, um, I'm really, uh, happy to hear about this park and curious about whether there's other areas within the region that we could protect with this type of an approach for, um, the future. And if we're, and, and it's not related to this particular motion, but the question would be, do, do we have a way to identify areas that might make great natural, nature conservancy parks within our region? And, or are they just for people to figure out and ask us?
Um, I can address that a little bit, and that is through the, the Parks and Green Space Plan that this board developed, um, between twenty-ten and twenty-twelve. And that's kind of become the, the go-to document for park planning, um, because it does set out six key priority areas and, um, you know, it gives the staff something to work with, so they do have a roadmap. Um, but I don't know if the Mr. Devro has further comments on that? Anything you'd like to add?
Yes, Chair, if I may, we, we just, you may remember, uh, earlier this year, the Parks and Trail Strategy, um, was presented before the board, and it named, uh, several areas for potential par- park acquisition in the future and expanded. And we do have, uh, outstanding, uh, applications with the province for parks that, that you, as you may remember, the Emily Lake Expansion is on the books, and that's about, uh, another, uh, you know, fifty, fifty acres or something added into parkland that may be approved. We're just waiting from the province for a decision on that, and, uh, um, when we developed, uh, the, um, beach accesses, all of the Modi right-of-ways on the, on the, on the mainland here, uh, were assessed, and the board at the time, uh, uh, determined which ones we would develop.
Thank you. Additionally, Director Elliott, there's also the Parks Acquisition Strategy that this board has adopted, and whether or not that means buying, uh, doesn't necessarily mean buying and requiring, so true license or what is it? Director Gisborne?
That's my second kick. Um, thanks for the clarification in relation to, you know, if we were to have improvements, it would require a master plan. I think if the community of Laskidi wanted something, we would cross that bridge later down the line, and I think right now it's just fine to have, uh, just a natural wild nature park. Uh, my subsequent question to staff, though, you know, based on Director Elliott's question, um, you know, the Parks Acquisition Strategy, Parks and Trails and Green Space Plan, uh, was the Spring Bay location identified in those plans? No, it wasn't?
Not as a highest priority.
Yeah, so, so that's a good guiding document, uh, but it doesn't mean that we can't acquire parkland that is not specifically identified in, in that document. So I'm seeing nods around the table. Okay, oh, Mr. Devro?
Mr. Devro?
Yes, if I may, through the chair, um, in that report, uh, beach access on Laskidi Island was identified. And why we're calling this a regional park, it is, it is more like a beach access similar to, uh, Canoe Bay, uh, at Scotchford Point, or Myrtle Rocks, uh, Regional Park, that, that kind of setting.
That leads to a question, Mr. Devro, that I have. The beach accesses on Texada are stewarded by the Recreation Commission, and they're considered community parks. So why would this one be a regional park instead of a community park? Mr. Devro?
If I could, Chair, um, the beach accesses on Texada are under regional. They're not under the community parks. The community parks are the forest land near the ballfields in, uh, Gillies Bay, Gillies Bay, Emily Lake, Erickson Beach, Blubber, uh, um, the bluffs in Venanda and the two ballfields and Farmers Market.
Thank you for that clarification. Further discussion on this item? Seeing no hands, we will vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Very unanimously. We're on to eight point five. First Quarter or Twenty Twenty Four Strategic Plan Progress Report. And there is a recommendation before you. Is there a mover for this recommendation? Director Gisborne, Director Brander, thank you. Discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. Eight point six is the Twenty Twenty Four UBCM Convention Attendance. And we'll see that there are three, um, separate paragraphs, these separate motions here. So if we address the first one, are you moving the first one, Director Gisborne?
Yes, I will move the first one, and I'm just going to let the board know that I actually have a fourth one that I've sent to staff.
All right, well, cross that bridge. Times, and then we know what we're doing. Is there a second here for the first recommended, Director Brander, thank you. Discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Very unanimously.
I'll leave the second.
Second recommendation, Director Brander, thank you, seconded. Discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Very. And there is a third recommendation.
So move.
With, also with Director, uh, Minister Fleming, thank you. Seconded by Director Brander. Discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
And yeah, I'll move the fourth one. I've sent it to staff so they can put it up on the screen. Um, and it would be that the committee recommends to the board, the board directs staff to schedule a meeting with the Honorable Ravi Kohun, Minister of Housing regarding consideration of capacity funding grant flexibility. And if there's a second?
Say that again a little slower.
Oh, sorry.
Director Lennox, you're seconding?
It should come up on the screen. Yeah, schedule a meeting with Honorable Ravi Kohun, Minister of Housing regarding consideration of capacity funding grant flexibility. And Director Lennox has given a second, so I'll be, I'll be brief as best I can. Um, yeah, we received correspondence from Ravi, uh, the Minister of Housing earlier this month at our Planning Committee meeting related to, uh, proposed legislation and the option to use the capacity funding that was distributed to the regional district earlier this January for, you know, updating OCPs and zoning bylaws. I think we've got over a hundred thousand dollars in there. The exact number is, escapes me. Uh, we heard from our staff that our OCP and zoning bylaws meet the current minimum requirements set out by the province, and that if we don't use that money by the end of the year, apparently it's, it's gotta go back to them. Uh, at the, I believe it was the Housing Summit, uh, the province was talking about that they're planning to offer these grants each year over a three-year period, and my thoughts are, you know, next two weeks from now, we're gonna be having a Planning Committee meeting, and we're gonna be talking about, you know, a variety of options in relation to housing, and I would really like it if we could have some greater flexibility in how we use this capacity funding, this grant, or grants, as is probably gonna come out next year and the year after. So that way we can meet, uh, not just meet the minimum requirements the province has set out, but to also be, you know, a bit more bold or proactive in, in some of these areas around housing. Um, because to quote the, uh, minister's earlier letter, uh, that, you know, he's happy to work with us to address restrictive zoning and make it easier for people to build small-scale multi-unit homes. Um, how that will actually play out will of course be based on the Planning Committee in two weeks. Uh, however, there is a deadline, um, for our UBCM resolutions, and whether this motion passes today, it still has to go through the board in two weeks, which will be after our Planning Committee meeting. So, uh, if we really don't like it, and, and we in two weeks, we can vote it down at the board level, but I figured, I had brought this up at our Planning Committee several weeks ago, and I figured let's get it on the agenda, so that way we can have flexibility for the money that's sitting in our bank account.
Right, so, um, okay, we'll go to Director Lennox?
Yeah, just quickly, Chair, uh, I support this motion and, um, Director Gisborne's, uh, intent to, to provide us with just as much flexibility as we can, and again, to allow that to, to inform, you know, new ideas and flush them out, right? Because, uh, really what we're what we're talking about is, um, we don't have a lot of those restrictions, so we're, we're trying to think of new ideas, and, um, the timing is, as you say, we're getting crunched up with the timing, so I we don't have a lot of those restrictions, so we're we're trying to think of new ideas, and um the timing is, as you say, we're getting crunched up with the timing, so I appreciate the motion, thank you.
Thank you, and and I also agree with the motion because I think we have to recognize staff's capacity, and it may not be possible to do the things we want to do in the time limit the government is giving us, so we don't want to send money back. Good grief, that's the last thing we wanted. Um it makes sense to ask for that flexibility. Uh any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. All right, so now we are on to new business. Um nine point one is UBCM resolution, and I think there it's pretty straightforward. I would move this um as a recommendation for the board. And that is the resolution um regarding permissive tax exemptions for nonprofit societies uh providing community housing. Director Lennox, are you seconding?
Seconding, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Director Gisborne, then Director Elliott.
Yeah, I got a question for our staff. Um I thought we were allowed to give permissive tax exemptions to nonprofit societies. Are like the golf course has come up multiple times, um and they're a nonprofit, and we've given them tax exemption in the past, so are we or are we not allowed to give tax exemptions to nonprofits? So I see uh our manager of financial services, so I guess it's a question through the chair to our staff.
Thank you, and and that's a not housing bill that that's used for, but let's get clarification from Ms. Greenin or Ms. Rodden.
Um thank you, Chair, uh through the chair. We, the Regional District can give permissive ta- permissive tax exemptions, but the criteria is quite narrow in the Local Government Act. Um I don't have it in front of me, but there um there is no, there's no uh provision for the Regional District to give permissive tax exemptions for for housing.
Hmm. Thank you.
I have something new.
Thank you, Ms. Rodden, yeah, and this came up at Planning Committee when um um uh this whole issue of uh you know, creating, there's a big difference between the city and the Regional District and what we're allowed to do, so we're not allowed to provide tax exemptions to nonprofits for housing, whereas the city is allowed to do that, so it would just kind of level that that playing field then. Further discussion? Okay.
I'm the second.
Director Elliott was next, and then we'll go back to you.
Thank you, Chair. I know, I'm easy to forget. Um so I think it's a good idea to have it possible to do permissive tax exemptions for nonprofits who are attempting to address housing. Um I think also that if if that were allowed, we could use our flexible capacity funding to create bylaws to allow for that. And um so I think it it fits together in the in the in the scheme of things. Thank you. Thank you, Gregor, like Gregor Gisborne.
Yeah, um it's making me think about the challenge we've had with permissive tax exemptions in the past, and one of the challenges around providing uh you know, cost-effective housing. Uh so one of the challenges is water and and sewer services, of course, as we've heard from our Planning Department. So theoretically, there's a property up in Lund, they become a nonprofit, they get a housing unit in there. If we give them a tax exemption, then that would mean that it would be the rest of the Lund users that would then be paying rather than the entire region, which is very different from a municipality, where it's the whole municipality that essentially makes up the difference. So I guess my question is and it's to our staff, could we be, are we allowed to give grants to nonprofits for housing? Like eh say we were allowed to do the permissive tax exemption, could we then say, you know, let's take the grant from the uh regional grant and give that to the nonprofit to the equivalence of essentially what their what their tax bill would be? So that it's not just the Lund people paying for it, it would be the entire region. So I guess that's a question to our our staff. Can we give a grant to uh essentially do the same thing?
Ms. Greenin?
Uh thank you, Chair, through the chair. I would have to to look into the particular grant that we wanted to to try to give. Um but generally, we don't we don't give grants uh to alleviate taxes. So eh we would have to look at the particulars.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um Ms. Rodden?
Chair, if I could just add, the uh the Rural Housing Solutions Report that the board received uh a couple months back was the trigger for this resolution, I believe, because the report discussed how um one of the tools for financing affordable housing is permissive, that one of the tools that local governments have is permissive tax exemptions. But that regional districts are exempt from that ability, and that was the trigger for this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Rodden. To level the playing field, basically. Further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Um thank you, nine point two. There's another resolution that I put forward um for UBCM regarding the lack of ability um or rather the lack of maintenance on roads, and I'll move this.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Um now the way it's written, it's that and where, so it's all one recommendation. So putting my name on the speaker's list is to um bring to their attention how the lack of funding to the local areas of MOTI is resulting in the deterioration of um of culverts, and it's to bring that to their attention so that that can be addressed, so that's the whole point of raising. Director Paul?
Uh thank you, Chair. I just have a question, but the reason we um referred this was because this, when it was before us last time, that was just im- immediately prior to a meeting with Modi, so I take it that, and I wasn't at that meeting, so I take it that uh that this, you know, resolution is still relevant um subsequent to that meeting with Modi.
Thank you, Director Paul, and if I might answer that question, um yes, it's still relevant, um perhaps even more relevant when staff came uh to that meeting that was attended by a number of directors, Director Brander and Elliott and uh doubt, I believe, you were there and and so um the 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 point is that um this area is being neglected, this area of ministry infrastructure and culverts which are meant to provide uh some form of mitigation in the event of flood disaster are in fact causing the problem from being um So that's why this is here, and uh Director Elliott, you're next.
Thank you. So um th- there is funding provided, the, it's a point that was made by the the folks that came to talk to us, and um what I think this is meant to address is the amount of funding pr- being being provided is too small in comparison to the need. And so the ministry is prioritizing all of their work uh what with various criteria being um likelihood of floods and whatever, and sometimes all of the money gets shifted to an area that's been wiped out and leaves nothing for the other areas, which compounds this problem. So in light of the increasing frequency of flooding um and the need to address all of these, the amount of funding that has to go has to be increased rather than provided, so I'm not sure if we want to amend the wording um to talk about it being just completely inadequate. And
Sorry.
It says infrastructure to provide funding, and they're going to just say they already do.
But it says funding to restore culverts.
I know, and they do, they do. The problem is it's inadequate, right? So
Are you proposing an amendment?
I don't have the exact amendment words, I'm just saying that that this doesn't appear to get at the issue, which is, the issue is the amount of funding that they provide in their budget for this purpose is is just locally inadequate, given the amount of floods we've had, but um that could be aware of, and you could just um have increase funding. I guess instead of provide would would do it.
Okay, let's hold that thought. Um Director Gisborne, I think you were next, and then Director Lennox?
Yeah, um on Director Elliott's point, I was thinking along the same lines. Uh this is the motion as it's worded right now is something I would support. I think the UBCM members would support, and it would be one of those classic cases of the province would turn around and, you know, give us a non-answer of, oh yes, we're we're looking into this. Um so I am thinking about a amendment, and when I'm reading the motion, uh ask the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure to provide funding to restore culverts on Modi uh roads, and I'm thinking to provide realistic asset management funding to restore culverts on Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure managed roads. Um the reason I'm I'm thinking about the long-term plan is what we heard from Ministry of Transportation managers is there's not enough money for them to to fix all the culverts, and the problem I'm seeing is they're only getting this much money, and the goal like the like the asset management is way over here, so what's happening is is the goalpost to bring all this stuff up to stuff is getting further and further away from them. And that's going to just become a greater and greater cost problem down the road. And I think about how at our Regional District, we do asset management. Where we go, okay, we got this new piece of thing, or it's ten years old and it's going to be retired in thirty years, and I would like to see Ministry of Transportation actually come up with asset management strategies for their culverts and their infrastructure, so they can say, okay, this is first, this is second, this is third, and that culvert over there in twenty years, it will be replaced. And then that way we can actually hold their foot to the fire, because right now they're they're doing like essentially the the forest fire management of of, oh, this this road washed away, we got to go and throw rock in it. Oh, that culvert's falling apart, we'll go and deal with that one. And I'm going, okay, we, Regional Districts, do asset management. And Province, can you guys do asset management on on your materials and your assets? So that way when we have these meetings and we sit down with one another, we go, okay, where are you on the plan? Because, you know, I won't even get into the issue over by Augusta, uh but.
Director Gisborne, you'll recall from attending that meeting that they said they do not do asset management plans for infrastructure such as culverts, they're too small. And so there is no direction for MOTI to do that. That may be yet another request that we might make to the province is asking um that asset management plans be adopted for culverts, that's a separate motion, I think, to what's on the floor, but could be made as a subsequent motion because it's certainly related. So I think that's a very good point.
Yeah.
Director Lennox, uh s- sorry, CAO had a comment, then Director Lennox. You're good? Okay, Director Lennox?
Uh no, Chair, I think the amendment that Director Gisborne proposed speaks to my intent, thanks.
Okay, so there is no amendment on the table now?
I will propose the amendment.
Okay, and what is it that you are amending?
Uh after the word provide, insert the words realistic asset management. And that would occur before the word funding. Seconded. Yeah.
Okay, so the amendment is to add the words realis- uh realistic asset management.
Yeah.
And funded.
Oh, the funding's already in there.
Yeah, I know, but you would need a conjunctive word to make the thing make sense.
Okay, uh that's a friendly amendment, Paul. And
Otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Provide realistic asset management funding to restore, so
Realistic asset management and funding.
Okay, and funding. And that is the amendment, and that is uh what is before us right now? We're talking with the amendment. Right? Um further discussion, Director Elliott?
I think that does hint at what I was trying to get at, too. Is that it's not that they don't provide funding, it's that it's completely not realistic.
You know that for sure. Other discussions? Um seeing no hands, that we're voting on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? Carry unanimously. All right, so back to the main motion as amended, is there any further discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried.
It should prevent roads from washing out, which will lower future expenses.
Now on to question period. Is there anyone out there who has questions for Committee of the Home?
Uh hello, Chair, Galinsky from the Peak here. Uh I do not have any questions for you today. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Paul. Um and there's no one else out there, so we have a motion to go in camera. We would like to read this, Director Gisborne.
I move the committee move in camera, the meeting be closed to the public on the grounds that the subject matter to be considered relates to matters covered by the Community Charter under Section ninety-one, C, labor relations or other employee relations, D, the security of the property of the Regional District, K, negotiations and related discussions respect respecting the proposed provision of a Regional District service that are at their preliminary stages, and that in the view of the committee could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the Regional District if they were held in public, and and the consideration of whether a committing meeting should be closed under provision of this subsection or subsection two.
Thank you, seconded by Director Elliott. Uh discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry unanimously. We are going in camera. Carrie unanimously. We are going in camera.
Recording stopped.